Roll call.
Paul, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for remarks scheduled to be by Councilmember Paul's. I understand he may be yielding his time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to take the opportunity, first of all, to thank Councilmember Paul because it was his day to give remarks. But because of certain circumstances that many of us are here for, he allowed me to address you all today with some remarks. First of all, let me say that we have had a very difficult time. And that difficult time has come because there have been deep-seated wounds in this country, in this state, and in this city that have needed to be addressed for a long period of time, and we've not gotten to it. And it's time for us to take stock and look at where we are and begin to move forward from here. We can't go backward, but we can continue to move forward. I can say to you with certainty that I and a couple of other elected officials, both on the city and county side, are working, first of all, to address the situation with Mr. Spurlock. And we're looking at the potential of a couple of things happening, including the potential of a grand jury. We're still working on that, but we hope to have something for you within the next day or so. So I would encourage you to be paying attention as to what we may be doing as we go forward. It is important, though, today, this resolution, because I feel, as many of you feel, that George Floyd's family ought to hear from elected officials and others from across the country that this was wrong. And that we stand with that family for justice. That's what this resolution is about today. My intentions are, once we have the public hearing and the vote, I would like to get that sent to the family so that they know that this city and this city council and the leadership in this community are reflective of their concerns, their feelings. But the other thing we cannot do is allow this moment to get past us and we go back to business as usual. If we go back to business as usual, we're going to be seeing this over and over and over again. And to me, I think we're better people than that. I think all of us are better people than that. But we've got to work at it, and we've got to make sure that we're doing and addressing the things that need to be addressed in this country that have gone unaddressed for far too long. What happened in Minneapolis did not happen here, but it affects all of us here. And so I'm encouraging all of you to continue to stay focused, continue to operate in a peaceful manner. Violence doesn't get us anywhere. The destruction of property does not get us anywhere. What we have to do is stay focused and stay in people, continually make contact with your elected officials and others, and continue to keep this in the spotlight. Because we do not want to go back to business as usual. This has to change. With that, Mr. President, I thank you for allowing me to make comments. Thank you, Mr. Paul.
Yes, yes, I will. Clerk has preliminary announcement, then I will call that up.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. Whether you're here in person, watching the live streaming television, or participating by the Zoom platform, we thank you for joining us. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we please ask that you turn off or silence all electronic devices. Madam Clerk, we've had a request to move item seventy-eight to the beginning of the meeting agenda to facilitate the debate and public comment on this item. And without objection, it will be so ordered. We will first be letting people know, because of the number of you who are here, that we anticipate wishing to speak on this and to allow everyone's voices to be heard. We have a time clock system that is on the podium, and they're in the middle and on the end. The green light will turn on once you have introduced yourself by your name and address. When you begin your comments, we will then start your time, and you'll have three minutes. When you have a minute left, the yellow light will go off. And then, when your time is expired, we ask that you respect the time limit so that others have an opportunity to speak.
We have several participants here.
We will first have the people who came in person to testify. We have sign-in sheets, so if you wish to testify on item seventy-eight as a proponent or opponent, there are signup sheets outside the door. Please fill one out, and they'll bring it down. But I'm calling them in the order that they were handed to me. The first, Madam Clerk, do you want to read it up?
Sure. Item seventy-eight, a resolution that the Omaha City Council condemns the reckless actions of the Minneapolis police officers involved, and that the Omaha City Council grieves with the family of George Floyd for their loss and joins with the family in its call for justice and peace following this incident.
I'm going to be reading these names as you've written them. I apologize if I don't pronounce your name correctly. I don't mean any offense, it's just my weakness. Sawyer Stender, proponent. Sawyer, we'll come back to you. Miki Mitchell. Mackay, welcome to the Omaha City Council. Please step forward, give your name and address.
My name is Mackay Mitchell. My address is eighty-one ten Gerard Plaza. I come today following the deaths of George Floyd and one of Omaha's very own, James Skirlock, to show my support for the hate crime ordinance. As a young black male, it deeply saddens me to see the injustice, the hate, and the discrimination against black men and women. When I watched the video of the cop kneeling on Floyd's neck for nine minutes, I thought of how that could have been me or any of my brothers. I could see myself on the ground crying for mama. This cannot go on any longer. We are tired of seeing innocent black men and women dead on the news. This is the exact reason Kaepernick kneeled during the anthem, to show that the Pledge of Allegiance is not a pledge to black people. The same people who drug Kaepernick's name through the mud are the same ones who are quiet at the deaths of George Floyd, Ahmaud Arbery, and Breonna Taylor. I would like to share a quote from the
Roll call.
Paul Palermo Festerson Gray Harding Melton. Mr. President.
Here, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for remarks scheduled to be by Councilmember Pauls, but I understand he may be yielding his time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to take the opportunity, first of all, to thank Councilmember Pauls because it was his day to give remarks, but because of certain circumstances that many of us are here for, he allowed me to address you all today with some remarks. First of all, let me say that we have had a very difficult time, and that difficult time has come because there have been deep-seated wounds in this country, in this state, and in this city that have needed to be addressed for a long period of time, and we've not gotten to it, and it's time for us to take stock and look at where we are and begin to move forward from here. We can't go backward, but we can continue to move forward. I can say to you with certainty that I and a couple of other elected officials, both on the city and county side, are working, first of all, to address the situation with Mr. Spurlock, and we're looking at the potential of a couple of things happening, including the potential of a grand jury. We're still working on that, but we hope to have something for you within the next day or so. So I would encourage you to be paying attention as to what we may be doing as we go forward. It is important, though, today, this resolution, because I feel, as many of you feel, that George Floyd's family ought to hear from elected officials and others from across the country that this was wrong, and that we stand with that family for justice. That's what this resolution is about today. My intentions are, once we have the public hearing and the vote, I would like to get that sent to the family so that they know that this city and this city council and the leadership in this community are reflective of their concerns, their feelings. But the other thing we cannot do is allow this moment to get past us and we go back to business as usual. If we go back to business as usual, we're going to be seeing this over and over and over again, and to me, I think we're better people than that. I think all of us are better people than that. But we've got to work at it, and we've got to make sure that we're doing and addressing the things that need to be addressed in this country that have gone unaddressed for far too long. What happened in Minneapolis did not happen here, but it affects all of us here. And so I'm encouraging all of you to continue to stay focused, continue to operate in a peaceful manner. Violence doesn't get us anywhere. The destruction of property does not get us anywhere. What we have to do is stay focused and stay in people, continually make contact with your elected officials and others, and continue to keep this in the spotlight, because we do not want to go back to business as usual. This has to change. With that, Mr. President, I thank you for allowing me to make comments. Thank you, Mr. Paul. Mr. President, it's been a request.
Yes, yes, I will. Clerk has preliminary announcement, then I will call that up.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. Whether you're here in person, watching the live streaming television, or participating by the Zoom platform, we thank you for joining us. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we please ask that you turn off or silence all electronic devices. Madam Clerk, we've had a request to move item seventy-eight to the beginning of the meeting agenda to facilitate the debate and public comment on this item, and without objection, it will be so ordered. We will first be letting people know, because of the number of you who are here, that we anticipate wishing to speak on this and to allow everyone's voices to be heard. We have a time clock system that is on the podium, and they're in the middle and on the end. The green light will turn on once you have introduced yourself by your name and address. When you begin your comments, we will then start your time, and you'll have three minutes. When you have a minute left, the yellow light will go off, and then when your time is expired, we ask that you respect the time limit so that others have an opportunity to speak. We will first have the people who came in person to testify. We have sign-in sheets, so if you wish to testify on item seventy-eight as a proponent or opponent, there are signup sheets outside the door. Please fill one out, and they'll bring it down, but I'm calling them in the order that they were handed to me. The first, Madam Clerk, do you want to read it up?
Sure. Item seventy-eight, a resolution that the Omaha City Council condemns the reckless actions of the Minneapolis police officers involved, and that the Omaha City Council grieves with the family of George Floyd for their loss and joins with the family in its call for justice and peace following this incident.
I'm going to be reading these names as you've written them. I apologize if I don't pronounce your name correctly. It's, I don't mean any offense, it's just my weakness. Sawyer Stender, proponent. Sawyer, we'll come back to you. Miki Mitchell, or Miki Mitchell.
Makai Mitchell.
Makai, welcome to the Omaha City Council. Please step forward, give your name and address and...
My name is Makai Mitchell. My address is eighty-one ten Gerard Plaza. I come today following the deaths of George Floyd and one of Omaha's very own, James Skirlock, to show my support for the hate crime ordinance. As a young black male, it deeply saddens me to see the injustice, the hate, and the discrimination against black men and women. When I watched the video of the cop kneeling on Floyd's neck for nine minutes, I thought of how that could have been me or any of my brothers. I could see myself on the ground crying for mama. This cannot go on any longer. We are tired of seeing innocent black men and women dead on the news. This is the exact reason Kaepernick kneeled during the anthem, to show that the Pledge of Allegiance is not a pledge to black people. The same people who drug Kaepernick's name through the mud are the same ones who are quiet at the deaths of George Floyd, Ahmaud Arbery, and Breonna Taylor. I would like to share a quote from the movie Black Panther. Now, more than ever, the illusions of division threaten our very existence. We all know the truth. More connects us than separates us. But in times of crisis, the wise build bridges while the foolish build barriers. We must find a way to look after one another as if we were one single tribe, and until we are one tribe, there will be no peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Makai. That was an excellent presentation, but in terms of the rules of the council, we don't have either applause or the opposite of that to keep the business moving, but we thank you for that, Makai. Nicole Crockett, welcome to the city council.
I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous. I've never done this before. My grandfather was Albert Cleveland. He was on the council of city council, and my uncle's Ron Cleveland, he was former mayor. My concern is...
You're at sixty-one forty-one North twenty-fourth.
Yeah, I'm so sorry.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, please begin.
My concern is with what happened Saturday night. The way I read the concealed carry is you're not even supposed to have them at political rallies or protests. You're not supposed to be brandishing them. The castle doctrine requires you to retreat, and also in Nebraska, if it was expired, he had four-month grace period before and would have had to completely retrain after that.
Is there anything about item seventy-eight you'd like to add?
Oh, I completely support the city of Omaha in giving Mr. Floyd's family their condolences.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, we next have Larry Storer. Mr. Storer, welcome.
Do we give our address?
Yes, please.
Larry Storer, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, six eight one three two. I agree with the resolution. I am very sorry at what happened, but I'd also like to say that words matter. Words that I have matter, words that everybody else has matter, and we all need to be very careful with how we say things. I am not guilty. I didn't do a lot of these things. My kids never did a lot of those things, and a lot of places I've been in Omaha lately, the mood has been retribution, sins of the past. This might be part of the sin of the past. It was wrong for the police to do that, that policeman to do that. However, that does not give us the right to riot. It does not give us the right to walk around with our fists in the air, which a person my generation thinks that's a communist symbol. That's offensive to me. I probably offend some people when I say that, but young people don't realize some of the things. I remember the sixties, the riots in the sixties. I vaguely remember the riots in North Omaha, but the riots in the sixties and the riots the last few days smell just the same to me, that outsiders agitators may be people that aren't from Omaha, that they are using me and they are using a lot of our black friends, and I don't like that. I have a grandson that is half-black. What's been going on for the last couple of years and now this is pitting me against him, and I told him yesterday, the day before yesterday, "Don't go downtown Omaha looking for what's going on, because you might say something to somebody they don't like, and they'll bust your car windows out." I walked around downtown today, and I'm shocked at what I saw, and then here I see some fists in the air. Okay, black lives do matter. White lives matter too. We're all American citizens, so let's stop this division, like Mr. Gray said. But by the same token, Mr. Gray has said some things that made me feel pretty guilty, and I don't like that. I was not part of all that. My family was never part of that. My father worked with all races on the railroad, hard-working. I have, so don't make all of us guilty of all that in the past. It happened, let's change it.
Next speaker is Emily Walker. Emily Walker, welcome.
Okay, my name's Emily Walker. My address is seven zero zero eight North Seventy-Ninth Plaza. Nervous. I came here today in support of Ben Gray. I heard that this recommendation was coming before city council this afternoon, and I thought it was important to try and get not only myself, but maybe some other people in the community to come stand behind Mr. Gray. The reason for that is, I believe, and I'm coming to find out more and more through this over the past few days, that it's important to stand behind our black leadership in this community. I think it's all of our fight, it's all of our right, it's affecting all of us, but I think it's important to listen to what these black leaders are saying. I think it's important to take their advice, and I think it's important to listen, and I think with that, we can get a lot further in this fight by working together. I also want to say that the Black Lives Matter movement is a movement, it's an important movement. By saying that all lives matter in response to that is disrespecting the movement in itself. The reason why we don't say all lives matter is because all lives haven't mattered in the past. Black lives have been oppressed, continue to be oppressed, and so when you hear "black lives matter," it's important, and it's important that we leave it as "black lives matter." So I do support the recommendation for the George Floyd family. I think it's important that they have the nation's support. I think it's important that they have the nation's support and various cities' support in a positive manner, and that's all.
Thank you. Next speaker is Luis Jimenez. Welcome, Mr. Jimenez.
Luis Jimenez, thirty-three oh six Burt Street. I wasn't sure if I was going to support or oppose this resolution, even though the words being communicated are important, basically because I don't know if that's going to have an impact on what happened over in Minneapolis in George Floyd's life. But today, I support it, but I do think that we're not going to do anything for George Floyd. Omaha's not going to do anything unless you council members look at the police union contract that has not been updated since 2015. And if you look at what's going on nationally, I think that is what needs to be considered and also locally in the last few years. Look at the police union contract, because this precipitated from an encounter between colleagues. George Floyd knew the officer that killed him. There's things that we need to consider, and I hope that the council considers the police union contract and the different clauses that allows the police to have extra privilege in a racist society. The council, this council is a racist council since the inception of the council, and you can look at it up in the newspaper. The Omaha World Herald Inseparable paper said, "The council back when they were getting started was the racist council," and, you know, those aren't my words. This isn't anything new, but the fact that you haven't been looking at the police union contract for the last five years is problematic, and I think there's something there. Thank you.
Thank you. Jamie Sasser. Did I not pronounce her right? Welcome.
Okay, I am also incredibly nervous. I've never done this before. Thank you for having this today. Appreciate that. I'm Jamie Sass, six zero one five North Hundred and Sixth Circle.
Thank you.
I'm definitely in support of this item, seventy-eight. I also am deeply saddened by what happened, as is everyone. I am thankful that we are trying to reach out to his family, George Floyd's family. Obviously, this all needs to stop. I didn't write a speech, I don't, I'm not very good with words, but my heart breaks for that young boy that died the other night, and I cannot believe that he got away, that man. To have an expired concealed carry permit, to have a gun when no one else, none of the protesters were bringing guns or weapons, the message you're sending out, not you, our system as a whole, is that if someone comes to my home and smashes my mailbox or eggs my car, which we've all probably had done before, then I can shoot someone, kill someone, and it's okay, because it's self-defense, and that's wrong. It's wrong, no matter how you look at it. It's wrong. An innocent boy died, no one should have had a gun there. All the armed people were there, and no one could stop that man that killed a boy. So yes, I support seventy-eight. I'm deeply saddened by what has happened the last several days, and I, we need to be better. We need to be better, absolutely. We need to move forward, and we need to build bridges and come together. So thank you, sorry. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ashlyn Duval.
All right, Ashlyn Duval, seven zero one zero North Eighty-Eighth Avenue. Okay, so I am here today, only two generations removed from the civil rights movement, only two generations removed from somebody who lived through the Jim Crow segregated South, so that's legally segregated for anybody who is confused by that terminology, and it is a blessing and an honor to be able to stand here today and be in support of this statement where the police are going to say that this is not something that we support, because I have had my own run-ins with the Omaha Police Department, with the Omaha Gang Unit where I could have very well lost my life. And so I look forward to them releasing this statement to the city of Minneapolis and to George Floyd's family, saying that this is unacceptable, so that the next time I get pulled over, when I was seventeen years old and my car fit the description of a shooting that happened nearby, and I was surrounded by five cop cars and a helicopter and guns drawn on me at seventeen years old, trying to get ice cream, if I remember properly, that something like that would not be okay, and that recently, when I was twenty-four years old and asking the gang unit officer who was not involved in an arrest if he would unarmed minors, he had minors and handcuffs until their parents got home, if he would please take them out of the handcuffs until their mother got home so she could walk them through the statements and what they needed to say, and I got arrested that night for asking them to be civil and was taken to jail and for that incident. And so I look forward to the Omaha Police Department and the Omaha Gang Unit to say this, so we can hold them to a higher standard, to the communities that they serve, to communities that they're not equipped to be in, and to communities where they look to harm and belittle people because they have a badge and because they have a job and because they feel like they hold power in Omaha, and that's it.
Thank you. Janey Hooks.
My name is Janay.
Oh, Janay, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I'm Janay Hooks, one one eight two zero Golden Boulevard. I support this Agenda Seventy-Eight. As far as everything that's taken place in Minneapolis, it led to...
Janay, if you feel comfortable temporarily lowering your mask, we might be able to hear you better.
Better?
There you go.
There you go. All right, with everything that's happened in Minneapolis and the protests here in Omaha, Nebraska, it's led to quite some very unfortunate events, and at this point in time, I feel like it's shown the reality and the realness that Omaha stands for and has continually stood for for many years and many generations, and there has not been change. On Friday night, that young man who was shot, it was ridiculous. The whole situation is ridiculous, and how it's been handled as well, it has been ridiculous. I myself, I was out, and someone came around a corner, said someone was shot, and I went to go help. I hoped the two officers that were there on the ground with him while he was bleeding out, trying to do compressions and things of that sort to bring him back. His brother was behind us, obviously losing his mind, because he's watching his brother bleed out on the ground, and police handcuffed him and told him that he was a suspect. This is his brother, who just watched his brother get shot, and that is how the Omaha Police Department decided to handle that situation. I had to beg and plead with them not to arrest him. He was not a suspect. They said that him and his brother damaged the property. I had to show the police officer's video that it was damaged before they even came around that area. This is the Omaha that we live in. You live in it, and I live in it. These are the reality that we are now facing, and as much as people do not like the protests, they don't like the damage, that is what happens when you do not address the realness in your city. It's here, it's in front of you, and it's in front of me. And if you would like to see any type of change, you need to move forward with this, and you need to do the right thing at the right time. That's all.
Thank you. Ciara Wofford. Ciara?
Just so you're not unsure, Ciara Wofford.
Thank you.
I live at one three eight zero five Washington Circle. I am here to express my full support of ordinance seventy-eight and fifty-five, or yes, the injustices that the black community has faced has gone on far too long. I do want to extend my sympathy to the family of George Floyd. I think the true comfort that the family would get is justice, and like you said earlier, for something to stop, it continuously happening over and over and over again is just another slap in the face to the grieving mothers that have to bury their sons because of, because they were black. I think that this is important, and I think I would have liked to see more of my people here. I think that speaking out and protesting effectively is important. I feel like I've seen a lot of videos of officers kneeling and joining us, and I feel a little indifferent about it. I feel like that for some, it's forced, just like for some, it's forced to have been on the other side when they would like to have been with us. The real conversation needs to happen within the judicial system. The officers that are watching their peers commit these crimes and murder, murder our black people needs to be brought to the forefront before we can do anything out here. Thank you.
Thank you. Brenda Council.
Good afternoon, Brenda Council, sixteen fifteen Word Street. Mr. President, members of the city council, I stand before you today in full support of Resolution Seventy-Eight that was introduced by my city council representative, Ben Gray. I've talked to a lot of people, and they question the value of such a resolution at this time, many days after the incident involving George Floyd. But for me, I harken back to what we admonish private individuals to do, if they see something, say something, and think about it. All that we have seen over the history of this country, all that we have seen in the last several years in terms of police abuse of authority and taking the lives of innocent, unarmed African-American men, what if we had said something then instead of having to say something now? I don't know of another occasion where a city council, a city government, has gone on record condemning the actions of police. I'm not aware of another occasion where that has occurred. Had that occurred after Eric Gardner, maybe we wouldn't have had a George Floyd, but it took the wanton, callous murder of George Floyd for councils across the country to take action similar to this. And what I'm saying is this action needs to be taken, must be taken, should have been taken decades ago. taken decades ago, to have prevented the loss of so many innocent lives to abuse of authority. We need to go forward now, sending this resolution to the family of George Floyd. We must honor the request of his family, as well as the family of James Skirlock, for justice and peace, and I hope that we will move forward in that vein, seeking justice and peace. Thank you again, Councilman Gray.
Thank you. Is it Tamahamid or Tamika Mies? Oh, Tamika Mies. Your...
Good afternoon.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Tamika Mies, and I reside at forty-eight fifteen North One Hundred Forty-Eighth Circle. I agree with the resolution. I agree that we should stand in solidarity against racism, bigotry, systemic oppression, and the criminalization of blacks because of the color of their skin, our skin. But for us to fully support, we have to make changes here in our city, in our state, and be transparent about them before the changes are made. Implement new laws, updated policies and procedures with fairness and justice for all citizens of the city of Omaha and the state of Nebraska. And when you do this, prior to making those changes, bring community leaders to the table, allow us to have a voice, and not just tell us how things are gonna be, or decide what's best for us. What happened to George Floyd is unacceptable. The actions made by the police officers of the Minneapolis Police was unacceptable. And also, how Omaha has handled our own murder of a young black man whose life was taken senselessly by a white man that has no charges brought against him is also unacceptable, and it is injustice. So, as we agree to stand in solidarity with the family of George Floyd, we would also want to stand in solidarity with the family of James Skirlock, right here in our city. Take a good look at ourselves. Before we go looking at others, let's take care of home. Okay? I can't stress that enough, let's take care of home, because we're here, and this is real, and it's gonna continue to happen. And I have to be honest, someone else up here had already, I'm not sure, I've been at so many meetings today, but someone mentioned the Red Summer of nineteen nineteen and Omaha Race Riot, and it's a reminder, and it's like it's happening all over again, and we're tired. We're tired, and we're frustrated, and we are demanding change. We're willing to work together, be willing to work with us, but change has to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Williams. Scott Williams.
Welcome. Counselors, Scott Williams, thirty-eight twenty Jones. This is not the first time that I've addressed the City Council, but it does feel the most significant, the most meaningful. Our city is hurting, and our state is hurting, and our nation is hurting, and I do stand as a proponent of the action in Agenda Item Number Seventy-Eight, to issue a statement of resolution of support for George Floyd's family. It's a good first step, it's a good small step in the right direction. Ms. Tamika's right, changes do need to be made, and so while I commend you for taking this first step, I look forward to the next step, and the step after that, and the many, many steps after that that we still have to take. Like many of the other commenters, I did not actually prepare remarks today. I found that challenging, not least of which, because I have not had a lot of sleep lately, and I wasn't quite sure what this environment would be like. I registered to give remarks online, and I appreciate that you've made this meeting available to those who can't attend in person for public health concerns, or for other reasons, working people who don't have the luxury, the privilege, to take time out of their Tuesday to address you in the middle of a workday. But I do, but I do want, I wanna be on the record as saying that I supported this, but I also think that it's important to know that it's, it's not really my voice here that matters. And with that, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker, I couldn't make out your name, but you reside at twelve fourteen Jones Street. Welcome.
All right. Barbara, twelve fourteen Jones.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thanks, thanks for having this meeting. I am for it, and I wrote some things down, so I won't forget, so forgive me if I'm reading and not looking at you. All right. If we are to show the Floyds that we are with them, then we must not only enact laws that prevent such things from happening, but create the social acceptance that these laws being enforced. When it comes to white bodies, police protect and serve. When it comes to black bodies, it's about upholding the law first and foremost. They don't care about protecting our bodies. For instance, when James Skirlock was shot, the, the young lady said that the cops immediately went to arrest the victim's brother because of damage property. She had to show them proof that they were not the perpetrators. So what I'm saying is this officer defaulted to status quo, and status quo is to arrest black bodies, accuse black bodies of wrong. He had no proof, he made an assumption. Now imagine if she didn't have that on video. His brother would be in jail. Imagine the emotional damage. It's already damage of being handcuffed while your brother is bleeding out on the ground, but imagine being in jail for it. So, I have a personal experience, May twenty-ninth, actually, twenty nineteen, just a year ago, I was shot at by Michael Walker, who owns Search Side Club Omaha, in front of his bar. I was there, not knowing the whole situation, there's a river right there, I just got to Omaha anyway. I was there skipping rocks. This dude pulled up, yelled some stuff, got out of his car, attacked me, and then told me to leave, I'm sorry, he attacked me, I pushed him off me, he goes to his car, gets his gun, points at me, and tells me to leave. Now, I'm not a fool, now understand this, he knew how to get away with murder, the same way Greg McMichael knew how to get away with murder, Travis McMichael. Understand that Greg McMichael was teaching his son how to get away with murder. This is why this thing is lasting so long. We are, we have people among us who blend in with other white bodies, who continue the legacy of killing and ravishing black bodies. Greg, Gregory was teaching his son how to kill black bodies and get away with it. So, back, back to May twenty-ninth, twenty nineteen, this dude attacked me, and luckily, then I'm older, as I told people who would listen, if I was ten, fifteen years younger, I'd be dead. I was not afraid of Michael Walker, and I didn't want to harm Michael Walker. That's why I didn't punch Michael Walker, I just simply pushed Michael Walker off me, and I warned him that I can beat you, stay away from me. He took that warning, he goes into his car, gets his gun, and points it at me, and tells me to leave. Now, I'm not, I'm not about to turn my back on a bigot, all right? I'm not about to turn my back on somebody who just attacked me for skipping rocks. So that's why I didn't leave, let's put that on the record, by the way.
Barbara, we have a...
All right, my bad, my bad, here we go.
If you could wrap up.
I'll wrap up, all right. I'm making it about me, but, so what I'm trying to say is, police don't enforce the law at hand, and that's the social acceptance. So, just like Officer Child didn't enforce the law with Derek Chauvin, the sheriff, who was, who was the responding, who was responding with the officer, did not enforce the laws to protect me by enacting, giving that guy a breath to life's test or anything else. They just simply took his word for it. So if we're going to show the Floyds that we are with them, let's be with them both in law, and let's be with them in action as well. Let's create the social temperature, the social acceptance that, that it's, it's okay to, to protect black bodies with the law. Thank you.
Thank you. David Mitchell. Yeah, for those who came in late, you may have missed the announcement, there's a time system that after you give your name and address, your time will then begin with the green light, which will trigger three minutes. Yellow light is one minute time warning, and then the red light is when we'd ask you, in respect for everyone else who'd like to speak, that you conclude your remarks.
Which light was one minute again?
Yellow.
Yellow, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. And we've had applause, and it's because there've been such important messages delivered today, but the council doesn't usually have those kinds of things happen, because it prolongs the business and detracts from others who wish to speak.
Right.
Thank you.
My name is David Mitchell. My address is the War Zone, because that's, that's what I've been in the last couple days, and what I've been seeing in my own community, and I'm in full...
Let's, if we could stop the clock, but your official address is one six six two five Golden Street, correct?
My official address is the War Zone.
Thank you.
Now, back to what I was saying, and this is hard, because it's hard to talk about men, a father, a son, a brother, some, a cousin, that lost their lives. I'm a dad, I'm a, I'm a father myself, I'm a son as well, I'm a business owner, community activist, go by multiple, multiple titles, just like how these brothers did, and they lost their lives for just simply being black. George Floyd's neck was set on, kneeled on for nine minutes, and there's people that can sit there and stomach that, and watch that, and be okay with it, but you couldn't stomach watching Colin Kaepernick kneel on the field for no more than two minutes? Is that a problem, or what? We couldn't watch Colin Kaepernick kneel on the field for two to three minutes, but you could watch him kneel on some, another man's neck for nine minutes? And I'm so hurt right now, because I've been dealing, I, I haven't slept in days. I've been dealing with the James Skirlock fa-family, I was down there talking with his girlfriend, and he's leaving a daughter behind, because of this. And our elected officials is allowing this to happen. I was right around the block when he was gunned down. I was one of the first people to see the footage of this man being murdered. I did a livestream yesterday, telling people to send me more footage, we had over two thousand viewers. I had an inbox full of new footage, so you're telling me Facebook works harder than the county attorney? Are you serious? The county attorney had no more than two to three footages, but you're telling me my fans on Facebook can find the footage quicker than you guys? This is upsetting. This is upsetting. Facebook works harder than the FBI. That's a problem. That is a problem. I have tons of footage, it wa-I sent it over to the county attorney, I've been in close connections and talks with Brother Justin Wayne, and we're gonna make sure this goes before a grand jury. We're not gonna let, we're, we're not gonna let him walk away from this. This is a problem. And, people, I wanna remind you, don't go out and destroy our neighborhoods, don't destroy our, don't destroy our community. Antifa, if you come down to North Omaha and try to destroy our black-owned businesses, just to let you know, I will be there. I will be there to protect those businesses, just like I was on the front line downtown, protecting those black-owned businesses that night.
Thank you. Ian Salzman. Ian Salzman.
Five oh two two North Seventy-Eighth Street. The other day, I was scrolling through my Facebook page, and I came across a post from a friend from college, he's black, we boxed together, so there's some camaraderie that comes from that. And the post on it was a GoFundMe page for James Skirlock, and this, this friend lives in Arizona, thousands of mi-of miles away from here, and it was just a reminder of not only the need for solidarity in this country with Minnesota, with Minneapolis, but also the reality of it. Like the first speaker spoke about what happens to one member of the black community, the injustice there affects all members of the black community, instilling fear, stress, anger, the same with the American community. What's an injustice done to one American is an injustice to all Americans, because it proves that the promise of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness isn't available to everyone. And then it's also an injustice to the police community. There's many good police officers, and by condemning this action in Minneapolis, the Omaha Police Department, the good cops in the Omaha Police Department can distance themselves from that racism and condemn it. Racism isn't a partisan issue, it's, everyone can agree that this killing of George Floyd was the face of racism. So I would recommend that the council likewise support a show of solidarity for George Floyd and the people of Minneapolis. Thank you.
Thank you. Shalyn Oliver, or Shaila?
Hi, Shirley Oliver, five one three two North One Sixteenth Street. I came up here to say that I'm in full support of Resolution Number Seventy-Eight, but it's also very sad and very disheartening that this conversation even has to be had, that the city of Omaha has to ask themselves, well, do we support Minnesota, do we stand behind George Floyd and his family? I feel like that should have been something that was just able to be said and put out there, instead of us having to have a conversation about it first, and I feel like that speaks volumes to where Omaha stands in situations like this. And I also wanna say that I hope this resolution is more than just words, I hope it's more than just something, you know, to kind of appease the public, I hope it's action coming behind everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Kaia Phelps.
Three zero five one Curtis. I'm here before you today saddened at the actions of Don Klein, but excited for what the future holds if we can just have more proactive judicial cooperation. This cooperation, however, must start and end with the truth. This city should not want us to emphasize why it is important to have us speak about the injustice done to George Floyd. It is uncalled for as human beings. Everyone here should know that kneeling on a restrained person's neck for nine minutes is clearly unacceptable. Then to have an issue happen in our own hometown, where a murderer was let free, who shot and killed James Skirlock with an expired gun, is all the more unacceptable. In our lives, we send many messages, let us now send the message that racism and police brutality will not be tolerated. Just like this country declared a so-called war on drugs, why not declare a war on racism? Furthermore, let it be duly noted, counsel, that we, the people of North Omaha, have heard Governor Ricketts' comments about him saying what he doesn't like about, quote, "you people," and heard of Mayor Stothard's inaction, and we, the people, will take that into consideration. Thank you.
Jadeisha Day or Dai?
Hello, my name is Jadeisha Day. I'm here today to speak because I feel that it's important for everyone to have a voice. I feel that George Floyd's voice was ignored, um, as well as many others. It's emotional for me to stand up here. I really didn't think that I would be this emotional, but I just want to say that there's a clear issue in this country. There's a clear issue in this state. There's a clear issue in this city. I was already an advocate for George Floyd and all of the others that lost their lives to police brutality, which was unjust. But when I saw that a 22-year-old young man with his whole life ahead of him lost his life fighting for the unjust from someone that was racist, I can't accept that. I won't accept that, which is why I'm here. And I want everyone that's sitting up there, as well as everyone in this room, to continue to not accept that. I don't really have much else to say besides, we need to take action. We need to have more than words. And we need to see what the result of those actions are. Not just a post. Because words without action mean nothing. It's faith without works. I personally made the choice to come here today. I've never come to a council meeting, so that is my first step to action. Also reached out to different community theaters that I feel have excluded people of color in our stories. And I've asked to have a sit-down with them as well. So that is the action that I am taking. Racism is a problem. And if it wasn't a problem, George Floyd would be alive. It's not the fact that the cop did that to him. It's the fact that the cop was racist. Thank you.
Thank you. At this, at this time, we did have Sawyer Stender sign in that we called before that wasn't here when we called. Her name, are you here now? Okay, great. And then we'll move to the people who registered to, um, speak as proponents by the Zoom platform.
My address is 6714 Mason Street. And I'm here today to put on the record that I fully support Item Number 78. And I'd also like to state that this is not a Minneapolis issue. This is an Omaha issue. Because, because of what happened to George Floyd and the protests that followed, a black man was murdered in our hometown and that white murderer is free right now. And that's not okay. And you, as leaders of our city, need to step up. Every day in my life, as a white person, I'm having these conversations with my racist white family members and telling them that they can't act in these ways. And you have to, as leaders of our Omaha community, stand up. It's not enough to sit in that chair as a city council member and act like you're doing enough. I want you at your family reunions, at your family functions, speaking out in order to make this movement go further, farther, and make change. And to the black people in this room, I want to address you and say that I'm sorry. I'm sorry that you have to feel this pain and carry the weight of everyone before you and all of your ancestors and then still continue have to carry it today. And to the white people in the room, I want to say, your hurt feelings and uncomfortable feelings that you feel right now and your fragility has no place in this movement. Because this is a Black Lives Matter movement. Because they do matter. And that's what's important.
Thank you. The clerk will now pull up the internet, uh, Zoom. And our first proponent over the internet is Laura McCarville, 3308 South 113th Street. Oh, she's scared to talk. She's scared to talk. Laura, your mic is unmuted. Please proceed. Laura McCarville.
I support 78. A letter to George Floyd's family is mute without justice. And as a city, it's time for elected officials to do their personal anti-racism work and take not just a public stand, but to also pass anti-racism policy. I stand for justice for James Skirlock.
Thank you. Our next proponent over the internet on Zoom is Kara Cavell of Nebraska Wesleyan University, 14010 First National Bank Parkway.
Hi, I'd also like to give my home address, 1835 North 49th Avenue.
Thank you. You may proceed.
As a social work educator and community member, I am participating in today's meeting in the hope that we can come together in the next days and months to have serious conversations about anti-racism, poverty, diversity, and human rights in our community. The immediate catalyst of this political movement and for this meeting, specifically Agenda Item Number 55 and Number 78, is the death, death of George Floyd at the hands of the Minneapolis Police Department. But this is part of a broader social context. In the past few months, we've seen a global pandemic come home with COVID-19, or COVID-19 killing over 100,000 people and disproportionately ravaging poor communities of color. Less than half of black adults have a job right now. We've seen nearly 50 million people become unemployed because of this pandemic, largely targeting those already in precarious financial situations, particularly women, Latinx, and black workers. And then when we've seen communities respond to the deaths of Breonna Taylor in Kentucky, of Ahmaud Arbery in Georgia, George Floyd in Minneapolis, James Skirlock in Omaha, and the life of Christian Cooper threatened by a white woman in New York. The white-controlled justice system has centered the narrative of this white man who killed James Skirlock. Yesterday's remarks regarding the evidence leading to the decision not to charge Jake Garner with murder are born out of an artificial, historically constructed legal system which expresses, justifies, and binds together the United States' white supremacy system and systematically benefits white people. The conversation we need to have is about hate. But furthermore, we need to begin to have difficult conversations to reimagine and implement anti-racist policies and practices and dismantle the white control systems of our country, specifically the legal system, the health and mental health care systems, the policing system, and the education system. This is where the real work begins. We must acknowledge this first, that it's not just about hate, but what is happening across the country in different contexts are all manifestations of white supremacy culture. Our white leaders must educate themselves and begin to dismantle the internalized white supremacist values that are unconsciously and consciously upheld. And I believe the purpose of education is to bring awareness to our suffering, the suffering of others, and the suffering of our communities, both local and global. We do this through the process of learning, unlearning, and reflecting both individually and as a community. Education allows us to explore and understand what we have unconsciously repressed or ignored within ourselves and our community and how this causes suffering. On a micro level, I have the opportunity to use my power to facilitate with myself and my social work students an exploration and recognition of thought and behavior patterns that perpetuate harm. On a macro level, I acknowledge these patterns as white supremacy, patriarchy, homophobia, ableism, transphobia, and xenophobia, to name a few. These forces govern our practices within larger institutions and they must be acknowledged, examined, and dismantled.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Giovanna, is it Balkier? Balkier, 8016 Fillmore Street. She's on the screen, the bottom right. There she is. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Your three minutes will begin after you give your name and address.
Okay, my name is Giovanna Balkier. My address is 8016 Fillmore Street. I'm in total support of Item Number 78. I don't know why we're even having this conversation. Omaha Police Department should have made a statement as soon as they found out and condemned the officers and the Minneapolis Police Department that murdered George Floyd. They need to recognize that they are complicit if they stay silent. The police department here in Omaha and the city have a long history of violence, oppression, and police brutality towards the black community, indigenous people, let us not forget, Zachary Bear Heels and other people of color. Condemning the police force is only the first step towards bringing justice for George Floyd. Like many have said, this can't just be one step. We need to keep taking steps forward. Thank you.
Thank you. We have another person registered to speak online, William K., 3524 Dewey. Before we open up the mic to Mr. K., I'd remind people who may have joined us late, if you wish to speak as a proponent or opponent on Item 78, we have a sign-in sheet out front, so you have a few more minutes to do that if you miss that. Well, just come see our clerk out at the table. She'll, she'll go back out there. All right. Are we ready for Mr. K.? All right. Mr. K., your time will begin after you give your name and address.
Hi, William K., 3524 Dewey Avenue, Number 2. I appreciate that the city council has proposed this resolution, but I want to argue that more is needed, much, much more than that. And I want to ask, will you condemn the officers who fired rubber bullets at people peacefully gathered on their porch in Minneapolis? Will you condemn the officers who drove through a crowd of people in both New York and LA? Will you condemn any of the other heinous stories I have both heard of and witnessed involving police abuse at these protests? On Saturday night, I joined a crowd gathered at the Target on 72nd. I watched as police officers entered with a war zone mentality. They showed up to a peaceful protest in full riot gear and armored tanks. I stood in a line chanting, "We are peacefully assembled", as they fired tear gas directly at us with no warning. They did not let us escape or tell us where to go. Not, I'm not gonna read intent into their actions, but I will tell you what it felt like to me. It appeared they wanted to hit as many of us as possible, that their goal was not for us to disperse, but to hit as many of us as possible for tear gas, with tear gas. All of this for what? To defend property? For people who say that these actions are justified to stop violence, I simply want to ask you, what does violence mean? Does violence mean the destruction of property? I don't believe so. I think violence means the destruction of human bodies and human lives. The value of a life can never compare to the value of property. And equating people with property is, in fact, a long and shameful American tradition. It is simply not enough to condemn the actions of the police officers involved in Minneapolis. That's easy. I want to see condemnation for the police violence, brutality, and yes, terrorism that has been experienced all across this country in response to peaceful uprisings. And I will just end my speech by saying, emphatically, that black lives matter. Thank you.
We did have one more speaker sign in for Item 78 as a proponent, Ally Pike. Welcome.
My name is Ally Pike, 5508 Corby Street. Um, I just want to, um, say that yes, I am in support of Number 78. And I'd just like to implore whoever does make this address to George Floyd's family, that hopefully it is a person of color that's representing us. But if it is not, please have your statement reviewed by, um, black leadership in our city. Before giving it, make sure that it is heartfelt, that it is something you get behind and aren't saying just to get it done. And that it is in respect to the Floyd family and focused on them only and that we don't make the mistake of insulting them by giving a list of fallen police officers afterward. Please focus on that family. And if you're going to list names to honor, make sure it's names of Black figures that have been taken by, by our police. Thanks.
Thank you. Malik Cotton? Once you give your name and address, Malik, then your time will begin.
My name is Malik Cotton, 4925 Manderson Street. Um, this is my first time ever coming to a meeting like this. I just want to ask the questions. How are we here for George Floyd when none of you have been down to downtown to protest, join arms with the peaceful people? I want to know, how are y'all here today when a lot of fraudulent behaviors has gone on in this community between the judicial system? I, I just want to know, when does it stop? And when do people stop receiving checks and start actually taking their job for the title that it is? I really want to know, when are y'all gonna start holding each other accountable? Nobody's being held accountable. I want to know how are, I don't feel bad for the officers. You want to know why? Because the people put in place to hire them, those are the ones that honestly have to answer to God. Because I just don't understand how these people, they're insane, they're standing on people's necks. They're, they, they come to work angry. They come to work like they're, like, like you don't get paid to do this. Like, you get paid to sit behind this desk for District 7, 6, 4, 3, 2, 5, 1, whatever else is left. I, I'm confused. If you don't want the job, then don't come to work. There is somebody out there honestly trying to do your job and wants it done right. Sheriff's here. They're angry. Police are angry. Didn't lose nobody Friday. You came to do your job. Do your job by ushering the people home. The people who are, who are, who don't know where to turn. The people who are honestly down, they're sick and tired because they honestly wake up every day to change. I don't understand, when, when does it happen? It's just, it's like, you want to be a fireman, go be a fireman. You want to be heinous, go be heinous. You want to be fraudulent, go be fraudulent somewhere else. But you guys hold the keys to our lives in this community. If we're gonna meet for George Floyd, meet for George Floyd in Minnesota. Meet here right now for James Skirlock. Meet here today for James. Why are we not here for James? How, how come y'all can figure out that the man is not guilty in two hours? Take him around, y'all say y'all had him in custody, but what you did was took him around the corner, patted him on his back, and let him go. I'm confused. I'm just, I, I'm honestly trying to understand. And I go live on Facebook and I try to figure out, like, from the people. But I had, God, I had to pray to God and ask Him to bring me here today to talk to y'all. Because I really want to understand from y'all. My name is Malik Cotton. If you want to talk to me, I would love to talk to y'all. But I am honestly trying to understand that it's time to stop receiving a check and do your job. It's, it's, that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. We have, uh, one person who has registered as to speak in opposition, Jakine or Jaquem Fox.
Don't, don't, don't hide now. Don't run. Come say your piece.
We'll give you going once. Okay.
Of course.
All right. We know you already spoke, Mr. Hemmings. All right. The public hearing is closed on Item 78. We have Mr. Festerson. You're recognized. Try it again.
Okay, thank you. We have a new system here. Apologize for that.
That was my error.
I didn't want to blame it on you. I do want to thank Councilman Gray for introducing this resolution and providing this forum for us today. I think it's very important. And I want to thank all of you for being here and giving us those opinions and insights, especially those that are here for the first time. I think it was constructive testimony. I also want to express my condolences to the family of George Floyd and let you know that we all share that outrage. We all have to own this. This is all our responsibility, North Omaha, South Omaha, East Omaha, West Omaha. We're all in this together. Black lives matter and we hear you. I also want to express my condolences to the family of James Skirlock. The circumstances of that incident were tragic and we lost another innocent life to senseless violence. And I also want to share my concern that we can't miss this opportunity. We can't miss this opportunity to unify our city and our state- miss this opportunity to unify our city and our state and double down on issues around race, inequality, and justice together. So I'm encouraged by some of the things I've seen even in just the last 24 hours, today's testimony in this forum, for example, peaceful demonstrations last night throughout the city, throughout my district. There were many, and they were all peaceful. No confrontations at 72nd and Dodge last night. There were folks in Dundee, Benson, Memorial Park. And although there were incidents downtown last night, those were largely peaceful too. We should recognize that. And I took my kids to see it too. I think that's important. We got to engage our young people in this conversation and let them understand and learn. And lastly, I would just say that I greatly respect and agree with those demanding change here today and across the community and across our country. I would gladly take a knee with the peaceful protesters, not the least of which, by the way, are the families of George Floyd and James Skirlock. So we hear you. Let's work together, and I'll motion to approve this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Festerson. Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, let me say, the reasons for doing this, and I know I heard a young, an individual on, I think it was on Zoom, say, list a number of other issues that we should have addressed and perhaps maybe done a resolution for as well. And I don't disagree with that, but the fact of the matter is, is that in this particular instance, we had a police officer who we saw on television have his knee in the neck of this man for nine minutes. That is, while it's tragic, and while there have been tragedies before, it is unusual for us to watch a murder on television happen. So I felt that it was important to not only address it here, but to send a message to the family that we have, that we are in support of their efforts to seek justice and their efforts to seek peace. I also, my other reason for putting this resolution on the agenda was so that you all could be here to speak, because far too often, people whose voices we don't hear get silenced by one way or another. And so for those two reasons primarily, it was my intent to put this resolution on the agenda. Having said those things, I appreciate all of the comments that were made today. I appreciate you all being here. I appreciate that all of us, all of us who are people of color are in pain, and that pain needs to stop. And the only way that pain is going to stop is for us to recognize that we have a long way to go. People talk about how far we've come. We got a long way to go, and we got, and we've got, we've got to get there. Otherwise, we destroy our nation, and that's something none of us wants to see. I do want to take the opportunity, however, though, to recognize a couple of things, because I've heard people say that this council needs to step up, and I don't disagree with you. We need to do more. But I need to remind you all of some things that have already been put in place. There's a Step Up Summer Jobs Program that is second to none in the country. We put that together. We are the only city in the state with an equal employment ordinance for the LGBTIA community to protect them in the workplace and in public accommodations. There are things, we, there is the neglected and abandoned building ordinance for people who, and, and our landlord registry for people who have started, who have tried to evict people from their property for little or no reason. Have we done enough? Absolutely not. Do we need to do more? Absolutely. But in this particular instance, what we need to do is stay focused on what's ahead of us, and what's ahead of us is the tremendous work of addressing institutional racism and having more than just discussion, because I'm tired of talking about discussion about race. I want to have a discussion about racism, not race, racism, and how we address that. And we need to begin to talk about that, and there are going to be some efforts that you're going to see coming forward from me and others that want to have not only the discussion, but the resolution of racism in this country, because we've got to deal with that. We, as a community and as a nation, have never sat down to significantly air our grievances as they did in South Africa with their truth and reconciliation efforts. We need to do the same thing in Omaha. But for me, in terms of this resolution, it is important for me and for us to let the George Floyd family know that this is unacceptable. It is unacceptable for our police department. It is unacceptable for any other police department. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. There are no further lights. This next item, the chair will call up, in my discretion, without objection, will move to item number 55, because it might, in the.
We need to vote there.
Yes, I just want to let you know what's going to happen next. And then it'll be the intent of the chair after that to proceed item 79. So we'll go vote on this, then to 55, then to 79, then we'll go to the beginning of the agenda, because I think that's why you're all here today. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Poler.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 78 is approved, seven to zero. Item 55, an ordinance to add Section 20-13 to the Omaha Municipal Code to create the offense of hate intimidation.
The public hearing on item number 55 begins at this time. Does Mr. Cousy wish to speak from the city prosecutor's office?
Are you calling for comments?
Uh, no. We'll proceed to the proponents. We've had a sign-in sheet. The first person is Jamie Flofsky or Flousky.
Yeah, that's me.
Come on down. Once you approach the microphone, first of all, welcome.
Thank you.
Your name and address, and then once you give your name and address, the time will start. You'll have three minutes. There's a green light, then a yellow light for a one-minute warning, and then the red light.
Okay. First of all, I would just like to say that didn't know I was going to be here today, so, hi, it's my first time ever doing something like this. I just wanted to give some input.
Name and address.
What?
You have to state your name.
Oh, hi, I'm Jamie. Jamie Ilaski. You were so close. Okay.
And your address is?
3070 North 187 Plaza in Elkhorn.
Thank you so much.
Like I said, I'm new to this. Okay, I would just like to give some input as to what I saw on Friday and Saturday. I know that was already discussed, but there were peaceful protesters, and there were elderly, elderly people, there were children, there were dogs in the crowd. We were on public property. We were on the sidewalk, and the police came in riot gear. They fired at us with rubber bullets. They fired at us with tear gas. There were elderly people in that crowd, there were children in that crowd, and there were dogs, because it was a peaceful protest. I think that this issue is way bigger than just George Floyd. This is way bigger than James, although we also need justice for them as well, for Armod, for Breonna, but this is a bigger issue. I feel like the police institutionally has been supported by racist and white supremacy for generations. I mean, the black community has seen violence against them for 400 years, and we can all say that it's not all cops, it's not all cops. We know that. But it's not just about the cops, it's about the system that created the cops. It's about not holding them responsible. We can say that there are a couple cops, right, that are not doing good at a precinct, but if, if there's like a couple bad apples, it spoils the whole bunch. And something has to be done on a higher level. We need accountability from you guys. We need people to call, call each other out, to hold them accountable. It's not enough. Additionally, I was there when James was shot. I was across the street. Jake, whatever his name is, he was yelling racial slurs. He was pointing his gun at protesters and taunting them. He was pointing his gun at protesters and taunting them, and James went up to him and said, "What are you doing? What are you doing? Don't bring a gun to this. What, what are you doing?" And that's when the quarrel happened that led to the death of James. So I, I appreciate what you said before about, or someone said about, we, you know, it's horrible what happened to James. That was murder. I don't, I don't know the, I don't know law terms. I was a sociology major, I'm a psychological researcher, I don't know law terms, and I, I don't know anything about the intent. I don't know this Jacob, or Jacob guy, but I do know that he was taunting the crowd with a gun, and he was on public property. He wasn't, he was outside of his building, whatever bar he owns, and he was taunting the crowd. He's a white supremacist. He has, he has a swastika on his arm. This guy, I don't know what else to say, but I think that everybody's here, and the movement that we've seen on television is, people are fed up, and people, I hear them say, "The rioters, the looting, it's bad, it's bad." It is bad. But as I know from research, violence and aggression are a response to trauma. Trauma, systematic, systemic racism, generational racism, systemic racism, it's traumatic. Our body's responses to trauma is violence and aggression. I used to work at a juvenile detention center as a therapist. I would be, I would be punched in the face, I would be spit at, and I didn't respond angrily because these kids were traumatized. Of course, I lost my cool sometimes, I, you know, I don't want to be assaulted, but these kids were traumatized. So am I done? Am I close to being done?
I'm just going to say, you need to kind of wrap up.
Okay. What I'm saying is, when the police come in riot gear, it all, it like riles up a crowd that is already tired. It riles up groups of people that are already traumatized, that are already emotional, and it does not help the situation. Have your officers come with us, talk to us, have conversations with us. You know, there's always going to be people that throw water bottles. There's always going to be those people. But like I said, violence and aggression is a response to systemic racism, which is traumatic.
Thank you.
That's all. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. All right. So the city prosecutor has joined us. Mr. Cousy, would you come down and tell us what you're trying to accomplish with item 55? A little background, please.
Matt Cousy, City of Omaha Law Department. The genesis for the ordinance before the council today started late 2019, early of 2020, when news story, or something that I heard, about the city of Charleston, South Carolina, passing a hate crimes ordinance, of which this one is somewhat modeled on. I know the director of the Anti-Defamation League is here, and I believe this is also based on a model that they put out. We don't currently have a hate crime ordinance in the city of Omaha. There is one in Nebraska law, but not in our municipal code. Forty-seven states, including as well as the District of Columbia and the federal government, all have hate crime laws of some sort, whether it's an additional offense or an enhancement. Only three do not, the state of Wyoming, the state of South Carolina, and the state of Georgia, at my last count, do not have one. So I had a conversation with the mayor and the police chief and the Human Rights and Relations Department about this idea, and it was all agreed that was something that we should pursue. Drafts were made and circulated, and the coronavirus situation came up and was kind of put on the back burner. Couple of weeks ago, the mayor contacted me and indicated that she wanted, this is something to move forward with. That was the genesis for this going forward. What this ordinance intent is to do is to add an additional level, an additional penalty for people who it can be proven have committed their act based on targeting someone, and the list was contained within the ordinance. The list is based on what currently the United States Supreme Court and other courts have recognized as protected classes, and I won't go through the list because it's lengthy and it's contained within the ordinance itself. So what this ordinance does is if someone is charged with an offense, and I will use assault and battery as an example, and it can be proven that the basis for that assault, either in whole or in part, is based on targeting someone, based on one of those factors, this additional penalty would apply. It is similar to a use charge in felony cases. It's tied to the underlying offense. You can't be just convicted of this, you have to be convicted of the underlying offense. I suspect that as the public hearing moves on, there'll be questions for me at the end, of which I will obviously take from the council at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Cousy. Our next speaker is proponent Veronica Schinker.
Hello, my name is Veronica Schinker, address 15041 K Circle. A lot of people said that they wanted to leave America in November of 2016, Election Day, but I actually did. That day, I went to serve in the Peace Corps in Uganda, and I was there for 26 months and stayed there for an additional year to work at a nonprofit, just came back in March. And while I was there, I learned a lot. I learned a lot about how sometimes my voice is not the one that's needed. I learned that my first reaction to things is often wrong because of the system that I grew up in, because I grew up white in America. And I also started paying attention to politics. I was a history and anthropology major at UNL, and when I was younger, I didn't want to pay attention to politics until it became history, because it felt too controversial, it felt like too much work. But I realized that that is a privilege that I have as a white person, to not want to pay attention to politics, to be able to check out, to be able to consider myself neutral in these situations because of my skin, because a lot of people see white as colorless, but we're not. We are impacted by this system every day, whether or not we acknowledge it, we've grown up in it. And if you're not actively trying to find those parts of yourself and confront them and change them, then you're not doing this work. No one, no one is just, you know, complicit in this. We are not how we were raised. We are able to confront those biases in ourselves and work beyond them. And so I think that I, I support this ordinance, because if you are an adult and you believe something, it's not how you were raised, it's not beyond your control, it's in your control. Don't be neutral. Definitely don't be an oppressor and pay attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Cotton. Malik, did you wish to speak on item 55? Thank you. Our next speaker is Candace Price.
Good afternoon. I'm Candace Price, address 5132 North 116th Street. I didn't actually come here today intending on speaking initially. I thought I was going to be sitting at home and watching this on Zoom, and my daughter, who just graduated from Omaha North, is the one who actually got me here. You teach them, you know, and the way they should go, and then when they're older, you want them to not depart, and so she's teaching me now, she wanted me to come on up here, and so I wanted to support that. So she spoke a little bit ago. I'm always a bit conscientious on the things that I say, because I consider myself to be a leader within the community. I want people to be able to look at me with respect, and I want to stay respectful. Sometimes that causes me to not say the things that are on my mind, because I'm also a business owner in the area, and I don't want to offend anyone. However, at this point in time, I have been offended, and my community has offended. I'm very much offended by the way that Omaha has handled this case with Mr. Skirlock, as many people are. This ordinance that you all are passing for the hate intimidation, hate intimidation has personally affected me here within the city of Omaha, from the police department to other things that have occurred. I've been within Omaha and been called upon by young individuals here to come and sit by and watch as they've been pulled over by police, because they want to make sure that they're okay, and that's not fair, and that's not right, and no one should have to feel that way by someone that is supposed to be protecting them, by someone that we pay to protect them. They shouldn't have to call an outside third party to rush to wherever they're at, to simply sit and witness what's going on, just to make sure that they're okay, or if they're not, so that someone can tell the story appropriately of what actually happened. I'm. They shouldn't have to call an outside third party to rush to wherever they're at to simply sit and witness what's going on, just to make sure that they're okay, or if they're not, so that someone can tell the story appropriately of what actually happened. I'm sad that that's occurred. I've been a part of an incident in Omaha at the Quick Trip. That's on Maple, near 80th Street, 85th Street, where I was in the car with an individual, a young man, and my car began to have troubles. We pulled into the gas station, and the car stopped, and we ended up blocking part of an entrance. There's multiple entrances, but we began to block part of one. The car couldn't go any further, and there was coolant leaked out all over the ground. A white vehicle, unmarked, pulled up, and someone began yelling out of the window. A man began yelling out of the window, "Move the car, move the car," in a very forceful manner. The young man that I was with, of course, became upset, got out of the car, began fiddling his arms upset, and then a woman and a man got out of the unmarked white vehicle. They charged at the individual that I was at, and they tackled him to the ground in front of me. Quick Trip said they do not have any cameras that face outside. All of their cameras only face inside of the building in case they're robbed. Once this man was attacked, at that point in time, you could see that these individuals, who were in an unmarked car, also in normal civilian clothing, had a badge on their hip. How he was supposed to see that with them sitting inside of a vehicle, I don't know. I guess the same way that we expected them to see that the car was in distress and there was coolant on the ground. And that's the reason that the vehicle was there. They attacked him, and then they charged him. They charged him for resisting. Then they came around, they came around, and I had begun recording at this point while he's screaming and yelling, and they're on top of him. The woman and the man are on top of him. I'm at this point backed up, yelling and screaming. He's on the ground yelling. They charged him. I end up showing my camera footage so that you could hear it, and they had him plead to a lesser offense. So this is my own personal experience. And I know that you all are coming up with this ordinance as a way of thinking, feeling that it's something good. But the fact that this ordinance cannot stand on its own merit, that it can't stand on its own weight, and it has to be attached to another crime, is an issue in itself. Anyone dealing with hate within the city of Omaha, it's not okay. It's not anyone my children should have, anything my children should have to deal with, my friends, my coworkers, any of you should have to deal with. This shouldn't be anything that's on the table as, "Well, if they do this wrong, and they do this wrong, and they get charged with that, well, then we'll bring this along." Hate is hating is wrong. A lot of times, what happens with these situations is, until you're faced with something personally, you really don't know how you feel about it. You don't know how impactful it is. So I'll tell you a real short story, and I'll move along and sit down.
There's a whole lot of people that want to speak.
I understand, and I appreciate the time. I appreciate the time. As a young girl, I was raised to love and respect law enforcement. My mother was in law enforcement, almost 30 years. My brother would come home, I was raised in South Florida, my brother would come home many occasions after the weekend, saying he had been harassed by the police at the beach, taken from his car, asked to put his face on the car, asked to lay down on the ground. This was on more than three occasions that I can remember. I would just kind of hear and not think too much of it. I was a child. Well, not too long after, at 16 in South Florida, I had cop cars surround my vehicle. My windows were down. You could see that I was a young lady. I had long braids in my hair, similar to what my daughter does today. Five different police officers got out and put their guns on me and said that they thought I fit the description of a male that had just robbed a bank. That changed my perspective on life. I'm still positive. I still do my best to look at law enforcement and those that are here to love and protect us and take care of us, but we've had too many incidences occur. And once that affected me personally, then I got it. Then it clicked. No one else should have to have that experience of them affecting it personally for them to understand this is real, this is happening. We're fed up. We're tired. And Omaha needs to do better. You have the people here to talk with, to work with, that are willing, that are able, the young people, the old people, and everyone in between, and you all need to take advantage of that on more than just this ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
My name is Matthew Lamar. My address is 4827 Pierce Street. I rise today in strong support of item 55, the ordinance creating the offense of hate intimidation. As we all know, the city of Omaha has had a fraught history of race relations, all the way from the lynching of Willie Brown in 1919 to the horrendous killing of James Skirlock this past Saturday. It is far past time for our city to codify an ordinance which makes abundantly clear that perpetration of a crime against a person based on color, creed, sex, sexual orientation, or any other category is not only morally abhorrent, but is criminally wrong. It is time for our city to come to terms with not only its history of injustice, but the injustice which still permeates to the core of our community. As I stand in support of this ordinance, I hope it is only one step in our city's mission to creating a more just, caring, and accepting society. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Clarice Jackson. My address is 8110 Gerard Plaza. I stand here as a representative of the Human Rights and Relations Board, as well as a mother and a citizen of Omaha, Nebraska, a resident, rather. In light of everything that has occurred the last week and a half, from the heinous murder of George Floyd to the incident that has happened with James Spurlock, as a mother, as someone who feels like there's always a reason and a justification as to why these heinous hateful things continue to happen to a people that are my people, I feel like this ordinance is a step in the right direction. However, I am very grieved at how we as a society have handled my community. I feel that this hate crime, I mean, this hate, this hate ordinance will give some accountability because I think for too long, we have relied solely on the fact that people should be right, and people should be good to other people. Because as, I don't even know if he's in here, but it was on the George Spurlock resolution, he alluded to the fact that all lives matter. And I wish that were the case. I wish it were the case. Because if it were true, there would have never been a Black Lives Matter. But because, but because we knew and have known for 400-plus years that our black skin did not matter to some people, we have had to say in the year 2020, the year 2018, the year 2017, the year 2016, that black lives matter. And even when people wear a uniform that is supposed to represent protecting and serving all lives, we have found that black lives don't matter. And so I consider that hateful, and I hope that this hate discrimination ordinance also includes, because it says "a person," that that includes law officers who choose to not obey the law, who need to be policed, and that it includes those who choose to plan that they're coming downtown to guard a bar that they don't own. Okay? And then take the life of a young man because that person's father, who is exemplifying white privilege, decides to push and provoke a group of young people who don't know him when there was police officers everywhere who were down there to do their job. It was not his job to police, to talk to, to push, to do anything to this young man. And because of that, now we have a George Floyd and James Skirlock in Omaha, Nebraska. And it is not okay. And it is hateful. And if anyone sees that differently, that is the reason why we must have this ordinance. Because everybody does not look at us the same. They do not treat us the same. And that is all I have to say.
Thank you. Mackay Mitchell, did you wish to speak?
That's my son. He spoke earlier.
Katie Schroder.
I'm Katie Schroder, and my address is 2520 North 60th Avenue. Sorry that my voice is shaking. As a mother and as a former OPS teacher, I want to speak on the issues of hate, from a microcosm up to the macrocosm that brings us all here together to talk about it. It's easier in our homes and in our classrooms to teach about hate because we have control of the elements. We can teach our kids not to bully. We can teach our kids how to stand up for each other, and it's that simple. At the school level, there's a student resource officer, which is a nice way of saying that the Omaha Police Force has their own kind of rules and regulations of how they interact with our students. And I think that every OPS teacher could probably bear witness to one or more occasion where a black body was targeted and treated differently than a white body. And Minneapolis Public Schools acknowledged this when just recently they defunded, they eliminated their contract with the police. Because that interaction is a fissure that we can all recognize that grows into a large crack and a schism at this level. And what I want to speak about today regarding the hate crimes is that if we cannot acknowledge it on a macro level right here, it's easy to say a swastika is a signal of hate and identify it because we had World War II. But if you don't recognize a murderer using the N-word as a signal of hate, you are being negligent, and you are unteaching everything that we have taught our children. It's very sad. It's extremely sad because we can't prepare people for the world that you are perpetrating. White supremacy is in action every day. Racism is part of the being of all of us as Americans. And unless you acknowledge it, you can't pull those threads back out. What Don Klein did yesterday is an act of white supremacism itself. And I would say that that is a white color hate crime by being negligent to the facts.
Luis Jimenez, 3306 Birch Street. I was looking at the text of the new ordinance, an offense of hate intimidation. And it's got categories that are used for evidencing in court. So I hope that this model or what have you does hold muster, and you guys pass it, and we can deal with the incidents here with this ordinance. I don't know. Maybe we can't. I'm think, I was thinking about how on Saturday night, I was downtown, and the shooting death of James Skirlock happened. I was there, and I recorded the initial breaking of the buildings over by the double and unharnessed street. We told them to stop breaking, to keep moving. The protesting was retreating from the area because people were throwing bottles. We know what we're doing out there. We're being protesters. We're protesting, demonstrating, and there's no outlet here in Omaha for these things to be heard. Council members are overworked and underpaid, and that's what we have. I am wondering if the actions of that establishment, that business, was hate intimidation because that's a racist outlet. Those two people that were there to confront young people on the sidewalk, public space, were the, seems like they were the only owners that were concerned about their property. Businesses, business owners were closed. And after the destruction, they were proud. Those two people that committed this assault, this murder, were proud of their establishment, and they wanted to protect their establishment. And that's why they were there. The protesters and the demonstrators and the young people who have had enough, they knew what they were doing.
Thank you. Ashlyn Duval, you wish to speak?
Ashlyn Duval, 7010 North 88th Avenue. I think that it's a great, you know, it's a great step to say, hey, we are going to acknowledge things that are hateful, and we can tack it on to another charge. I'm sure if you guys pass it, if anybody has had any complaints with the Omaha Police Department, people are going to be tacking that one. You know, right along with it, as we've heard many complaints tonight with that, I have my own complaints, you know, with that, whatever. But just like the former OPS teacher said, that it's very negligent that a word that she can't even say, that I can't say, but I am not going to say it because a lot of you cannot say it and should not say it, is obviously hateful. And so there are things that happen to me, you know, when I go in public, people grab their purses, they let doors close in my face, they might make a look or two, roll their eyes, whatever. All those things are hateful. When the police officer ripped me out of my car forcefully, that was hateful. When I was put into handcuffs, asking somebody to be unhandcuffed, that was hateful. But as an adult who works in professional America, corporate America, who works with Christians, white and black, what sends me over the edge is when people say words they have no business saying. So the fact of the matter that this bill, or whatever it may be, this ordinance, that words cannot be criminalized vocal or written, it might be a waste of time, honestly, if you guys aren't going to amend it or add on to it, put more on there and add it to be able to be charged by itself. There are a lot of things that I can ignore, but I can promise you that especially in a climate like today, most adults with jobs, with things to lose, with families, things that they care about, what's going to send them over the edge is somebody saying something to them that they have no business saying. And there are a lot of things on that list that should be listed and can be listed that people don't want to say, as far as black people, for women, for homosexual people, for trans people, for all of the above, where there are things that they do not want people to say to them because it is going to send them over the edge. That means the word in itself is violent, and it often does not get acknowledged as violent. Their reaction gets acknowledged as violent, and that is not fair, and that is not right. So we need to acknowledge the words as violent, just as we would acknowledge their reaction as violent. And it needs to be able to be charged underneath this ordinance.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Ellie Roberts, and I live at 2543 North 65th Avenue. And I just want to say thank you to everyone who's spoken today. It's an honor to hear you speak. Thank you for sharing. And I want to say that this sort of legislation is the bare minimum that the city of Omaha can do. Some of my other speakers have mentioned that. It only lays a small part of the groundwork to ensure the safety of Nembraskans and those simply passing through our state. I specifically want to mention, in the larger context of James Skirlock's murder and the city's lack of response to it, the murder of Zachary Bear Heals, who was, I believe, a member of the Kiowa Nation by our local police, three of whom were reinstated for service last month. On June 5th, 2017, Zachary was left by a bus on his way back to his family in Oklahoma and was at a Buc-E's convenience store at 60th and Center, where his, well, his family contacted anyone they could to try to get their brother back to them safely. Zachary, who had schizophrenia, was showing harmless signs of excited delirium, including dancing and remaining fixated on his reflection, symptoms that are common in such a moment, and again, were dancing and remaining fixated on his own. and again, were dancing and remaining fixated on his own reflection, hardly acts that could endanger or intimidate any other person. Rather than responding appropriately to what cannot even be described as much as a crisis, the four Omaha Police Department members handcuffed him and when his hand came out of the cuff, which to me sounds like improperly applied handcuffs, he was tasered 12 times and punched 13 times in 15 seconds. He then died in our city alone. The Omaha Police Department failed our city in so many ways that day and has further since then, and our city has further failed him by not taking any action since. Adrian Chalepa, who is a member of the Kiowa and Apache Nations and Zachary's sister, asked me to ask you today, what was Zachary Bear Heels' crime and what will this community do to protect people with disabilities and mental health issues? I have a little bit of time left, so I'd like to read from a statement that his family issued. Also, we need accountability from Sergeant Eric Forehead, who allegedly referred to Zachary as an expletive R-word, which I'm happy to let you know what that is if you need later. Shortly before the officers beat him, dragged him by his hair and tased him 12 times. What took place June 5th, 2017 was a collective team effort to perform an inhumane insulting, culturally inappropriate killing of a human being. What we see here is a complete systemic failure in the Omaha Police Department, Police Chief Tom Shamunder, all officers involved in the city of Omaha, and innocent life was lost and the Omaha Police Department could hurt more people if it continues to condone an atmosphere where officers tasked to protect and serve can allegedly call a special needs person a R-word, kill them, and continue on their path of career development. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Philip Colbo, most recently residing at 312 South 16th Street. I'm here with Outer Spaces, I'm the executive director there. And I wanted to start with saying James Skirlock. And I've cried more this weekend than I can remember. I'm a proponent to begin protecting black bodies, native bodies, people of color, trans bodies, and more. I work for a nonprofit venue and we started because there are few safe spaces in this community, like The Hive, like Surfside. As a white person, we saw it paramount that we put words in our bylaws when we founded for anti-hate and zero tolerance clauses so that we could take real preventative action. Words are so powerful, we know this. When Gene Spather said, "We want to get back to normal." When Pete Pickett said, "You people," to black bodies and black leaders. When Donald Plin said, "James Spurlock." These are words of intimidation and are hateful because they're, they need to change. A military personnel told me once, an advice in how to protect myself and the people in my space, that if an assaulter has a knife, you run, and if they have a gun, you tackle them. James Skirlock was a hero protecting our community in illegal citizen's arrest of murderer Jake Gardner, owner of The Hive Bar. As you add these words with ordinance 55 into our community's words and laws, please start backing them with real action. This isn't fixed with just these additions. We need to look and change the police unit contract. And most importantly, as you're reviewing further changes in our words, you need to go back and listen to all of the black bodies who got up and spoke today. My voice is not near as important as theirs. Listen to your black leaders like Ben Gray, David Mitchell, people in our community who can speak for that. And I just want to finish with saying, justice for Will Brown, justice for George Floyd, justice for James Skirlock. No lives matter until black lives matter.
Did we have some proponents?
It's been a long day for the...
Mr., excuse me, thank you for your support, ladies and gentlemen, but Mr. Storey, you're well aware of the rules. The rules of the debate are the proponents are heard first. And once we get through all the proponents, then we move to the opponents. And that's the way it works. The next speaker is Ciara Watford.
Right on time. I think that's the problem, right there. That's one of the problems. I am not an activist, I am not tied to any organization. I am just an angry, black mother of two boys that when they ask me, what happened? What should they do? I don't have an answer. We watched the decision of the prosecutor. I watched that with my kids. I wanted them to see firsthand, I didn't want them to hear. My son, my 13-year-old son got very upset and he began to cry. And he asked me, "Mom, what should I do?" I don't know what to do. Because I'm scared. I have no answer for him. Does anybody else? Outside of praying, because God is the ultimate prosecutor, God is the ultimate judge, outside of that and believing in that, I don't have an answer for my son. Because people like Jake Gardner are still roaming Omaha. I am angry, but the one thing I am not is scared. I am ready. I am fed up. Jake, if you're watching this, which I'm sure you are, God have mercy on your soul. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Melinda Walsh. I reside at 6013 Franklin Street. I just want to say this is not where I want to be today. I have a 23-year-old son who is moving out of the state tomorrow morning. I should be with him right now. I am happy he is leaving Omaha. What I saw on Saturday, I was there, I was at 72nd Street. I saw peaceful youth expressing that they are upset and they want to see a change. I didn't see police, I saw militants. I saw a military ready for action, provoking those kids. When they didn't get the provocation that they wanted, they were tear-gassed out. I saw kids being mistreated, I saw racism firsthand, I saw violent taking downs of kids doing nothing wrong. These are, this is my, these are my kids. My child wasn't there, but I saw plenty others were. And I saw injustice, I saw racism, and it was all from the people who should be showing these kids what's right, the adults. The people who are there, who are supposed to be police protecting us, they pissed those kids off. Those kids went downtown with, with that, with them. That's what they were showed, that's what they're being showed. That is not okay. What happened later, I went home so upset at what I saw. I was enraged, I had tears going down my eyes watching those military men take down What happened later that night should not have happened. First of all, you have a man that runs a bar, he should not have a gun on that premise. You have a man who doesn't even have the logistics to have that gun. You don't bring a gun to, to a protest. We have the right to protest. It is our constitutional right to protest. That man, it doesn't take too far to look online and see that that man is an outright racist. It is not, it don't, it take me, it didn't take me but two minutes to see the racism and hate that that man has in his heart. And to let him go with no charge? We all know, we all know what happens when a white man takes a gun and points it to a crowd. We all know what happens. That young man, that night, who was about the same age as my son, he tried to protect everyone else on that street. If this would have been a flipped role, and that would have been a white man taking a black man down, you would have had a hero, right? Would that have been a hero? What is happening is hate in the system. And if everyone in this room doesn't understand that, you need to look in the mirror and you need to ask yourself, what is the truth? This is a known racist. Go online, it doesn't take too far, people. There was plenty there to keep him. There was a woman who was walking on the street, taken into custody because she was, she was walking on the street after 8:00 PM. She was held in jail longer than that man was held for murder. On blocks away, blocks away from the worst lynching in history, 101 years ago. Where are we going and what is going on? Look at yourselves and find it in your heart and know for yourselves that the hate begins there.
Thank you.
That man is a hero and he's going to go a hero and, and we will all keep fighting for justice.
All right. Barbara, did you wish to speak again?
Barbara, 1214 Jones. I'm going to stick to my text, but I'm just, I went off a little bit, so I'm 455, going to read it. I want to elaborate a little bit on what the young lady said about this man being part of the problem, or his, not that man, but his actions being a part of the problem. He knows the rules, but with his privilege, he just...
Luis, excuse me, would you stop the clock and not penalize the speaker? Luis, you're a frequent speaker, you know the rules, you're not to be catcalling from the audience and commenting, so please stay in order. Now, would you, would you give him a full three minutes so his thought is not interrupted?
That's cool. It's not going to take three minutes, I'm going to try to stick to the script. But thank you, I appreciate that. This man knows the rules, but with his, but with his privilege, he just tried to overstep the rules. And that took place in a formal setting, in front, in front of officials. Imagine that same privilege attached to toxic masculinity on the street with no witnesses. You end up with, with, with hate crime. Now I'm going to get to my, what I said. Okay, so I'm 455, it's a start, but it's a very small start. But I am so desperate for action that I feel obligated to accept it. Many people spoke about how it needs to be something within itself, and I'm for that. We need to create a new standard to judge perpetrators by. Jake shouting in the crowd, what he's shouting in the crowd should be enough for imprisonment. What the cops shouted at Zachary Bear Heels before they did what they did to him should be enough for imprisonment. The average rights supremacist has found a workaround, the system, and that workaround is to claim fear for your life. They can say what they want, antagonize, and then once, once that person is triggered and respond, all they have to do is say they was afraid and they can kill you. And, and the law rewards them for that action. Jake Gardner is a Marine who had an unlawful gun and used an unlawful gun, I'm sorry, Jake Gardner is a Marine who had an unlawful gun, who should be afraid of who in that situation, mind you. He is a Marine who had an unlawful gun, spewing hate, killed someone, and still got away with murder because he said he was afraid of an unarmed black man. And we accept that as so. There's no, yeah, all right, here we go. I hope other, other Marines will stand against his actions. I wanted to read a text that I got this morning, and I wanted to read this because it's important to implement this, this law or this, this policy or whatever, so that the average person could be held accountable. Okay? And I encourage people to run, I like to run. And so I encourage this person to, you know, to go for exercise or whatever. And I said, she was worried about going out, and I said, don't worry about it, be safe, you know, encouraging. This is the response when I said I would check back on her later. I wasn't going to say anything. Two Caucasian females rode up on me during my morning walk, shouting, shouting out the car, turned around and came back a second time and threatened to get out the car and kick my ass. Barbara, I promise, God, I have zero patience left. So what we need for you guys to implement these laws so that everybody can understand that they can be held accountable for it. We've been waiting on people to have the morals, to, to let go of, of the past, but they are showing themselves to not have those morals. So we need this to, to hold these people accountable. And I think that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilors. Scott Williams, 3820 Jones. I stand as a proponent with some reservations about the recommendation to increase, to include a hate ordinance in our city statutes. This could be another small step towards potentially addressing the pervasive systemic and structural racism that still obviously, clearly, unequivocally exists in our community. My concern, the caveat, is I wonder how this is going to be applied and enforced. Will it only be applied when there is another infraction or another crime that has been committed, is that correct? I understand it's not supposed to be back and forth. Can, can you clarify that for me, councillor?
We'll note your question.
Will this only be applied in the case of another...
The rules are that the body does not entertain questions in the public comment period.
I understand.
But I understand your question, and Ms. Kuzi is available, we will ask him questions when the public hearing is closed.
I understand. Will this only be applied in the case of another infraction or when another crime has been committed? In what cases or what crimes, what types of infractions? In the cases of vandalism, assault, battery? What about shouting racial slurs in public to a crowd? What about trying to provoke a fight? What about someone who, someone who brandishes an unpermitted concealed weapon, which I believe is a crime in the city? What about someone who fires that gun within the city? I think that is also a violation of our, our laws and statutes. What about someone who shoots and kills an unarmed man? Is that a situation where this ordinance would apply? That's why I'm curious, that's why I have reservations, that's why there are some caveats to my proponency for this statute. I'm curious how it's going to be applied. I'm curious whom it's going to be applied by. Will it be Don Klein? I'm curious if this is going to be applied in the cases of law enforcement officers. Others have asked this as well. So these are my reservations, but I do think that this can potentially be a small positive step forward. But I think that some of those questions, some of those issues certainly need to be addressed, and since this is, I understand, to be a first reading, maybe some of these issues could be addressed before the council decides to take action. Thank you.
Thank you. Maddie Griffey? Maddy? I'm sorry. Welcome, Maddy.
My name is Maddy Griffey and I'm at 5917 Camden.
My name is Mady Griffey and I'm at 5917 Camden. So, I'm standing up here not only for myself, my community, family, friends, but my son as well. He's four and he is a young black man. And this is a step, as everybody has stated, but I think it's sad because I was raised by my grandfather who marched for us so that we wouldn't even have to see this day. So, I think it's sad that something like this had to happen as far as with, you know, George and James. I think it's sad that that had to happen to put this in place. This should have already been something put in place. And also, you know, just to the family of James, I think it's sad that this man got off for protecting himself. Pretty much, there was a man who came to a fight with a gun versus a man who had his fist, who was trying to be a hero to protect other people. So, I think it's sad that it's being brushed under the rug and just seen as, oh, it's nothing. Because then what about those people who are in prison right now, who thought that they were protecting their lives? Don't you have to let them go too? That's the confusing part. So, if I feel threatened, I can walk around with a gun, I don't even have to be licensed. What about me? I'm scared for my life, what about me? You know, what about my peers? So, I can walk around with a gun and it doesn't have to be registered because I wanna protect myself and my family, that's okay, right? So, pretty much that's the message that we're putting out here. And just like, you know, less than, I believe that man wasn't even in custody for, like people are saying, two hours, period. Exactly. And that's sad to me. It's just a slap on the wrist when clearly I know what I saw in the video. I saw James being a hero like everybody else is saying, that's what I saw too. And let's not mention, he's protecting a property that he leases, that insurance can clearly cover. You can't cover a body.
One of, one of the things we have to remember is, I know for many people it's your first time here, so make sure we add time back, is that there's been a lot of commenting while people are speaking. The speaking is reserved for the person at the microphone, not for people in the audience. So, we ask that you please respect that process. Thank you. So, if you would add back time for the speaker, if you wish to continue on, I'm not gonna.
And I, and I thank you for that, but I, you know, I get it too. We're angry, we're outraged, so that's what you get because we're angry. I'm angry too, I'm angry is you know what.
Thank you.
You know, but, you know, for, that's something that can be replaced, a life cannot. And I know, I'm a family member who lost someone, murder. So, I think, I think this is just, this is very unjusticed and it's sad that it's came to this because it's just like, we're continuously going backwards, we're not moving forward. Nothing has really changed, let's be honest. Just like people were telling their stories about, you know, being pulled over by officers, not all officers are bad. I do have family members who are also officers, best friends, but at the end of the day, officers too. They need to be accountable for this too, not just peop, you know, not just regular citizens, no. But I think it's sad that it just, it blows my mind. It just blows my mind. And I'm angry and I'm pissed as hell, excuse my language, but I am. Because now there's another family out there suffering. James's family is suffering and all we're doing is slapping them on the wrist and saying, "Good job, high boner," I don't even wanna say his name because he doesn't even deserve it. And I feel like those protesters, right on. Right on. We need that. And especially if it's peaceful, why not? Give them a voice. And that's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Malik Cotton?
I'm back because I wanted to touch bases on this. I just wanted to know to the people who are listening in, watching live on TV, wherever you're from, I just wanna know, is the real reason because you want the word back? Is, is, do y'all want that one, that one word back? I, I wanna know because I don't, I don't understand why we are here, I, I'm just confused. On why are we not holding each other accountable? And why are we not holding this man accountable? Y'all have words, y'all have say so, and then we have people in here who are opposers. Opposing to what? What are we opposing to? I'm confused. I, I know you are and some of you are yawning, y'all tired, but we're tired actually. You can go, you're tired because you're ready, you've been at work all day. But see, we've been at war all, all our lives. We're tired too. We wish we could yawn and go home and wake up and this wasn't the reality. It, it is. Some of you are, who are, see, my best friend, his, he was white. And his grandmother, at the age of 64, told me, "Do you not know until I met you, Malik, I was prejudiced?" I, I was in the seventh grade, I didn't know how to respond to that. This lady tells me that she was prejudiced before she met me because she figured out through me that we were okay. We were okay. Sixty-four. Grew here. So, I'm just trying to figure out when is it okay to just be on our phones and not be attentive to the community? When is it okay to not go out in the streets and come from behind this desk and actually show the support? Officers kneeled. Colin Kaepernick kneeled. They kneeled and right after y'all stopped recording these big cameras in here, out there, what happened? Y'all know. Y'all don't wanna speak on it because you're behind the desk. Uphold your title. Mr. President, the other people on the board, uphold it. Actually live in the title for a moment and know that it's okay to be right and, and, and hold those accountable who are wrong. It is okay. It's okay to be wrong and get education from those who are not the same color as you or those who, who know a little more than you. Y'all didn't grow up in poverty, most of you didn't. So, you wouldn't know the oppression. You wouldn't know how it feels to walk out your house every day and, oh, it's a problem. You went on to the store and you came back with no problems. Some of us, our family members went to the store and never came back. James went downtown and his mother thought her son was coming home. She got that call that he was no longer coming home. And those of you got the text message and sent the texts off, "Did you hear what happened downtown?" Some of y'all did. Y'all did, y'all called each other at home. The man was released in less than, he didn't even have to blink. Some of us don't get that chance, sit in the county, sit in prisons, then y'all release him 30 years later. Twenty years later. Oh, you just found out that he was innocent today. But we know that Jake Gardner is innocent in the first two hours, 30 minutes, let's say that. Don Klein was there. Pete Ricketts was there. Mayor Jean was there, but she can make time on Facebook to talk about people who, who have their names in their foreign language and call them cowards and tell them that they're hiding behind the symbol of their language? How was, how is he coward? Press C translation. It's so simple. But see, I, I'm younger than y'all. Twenty-four going on 25. I'm trying to understand y'all so we can all come to the table and learn from each other, grow from one another. If you're tired, go home. If you're tired, resign. If you don't wanna, that's fine.
If we had, Mr. Stewart.
That's fine. But, but just no, but just no, I got one last comment and, and I promise you.
And I'm gonna let you make it.
Okay.
But, Mr. Stewart, you know the rules, you're here very frequently and no, no cat calls from the audience.
But the thing about it, and I'm gonna leave, and I'm gonna leave. But I'll leave.
Alright, Mr. Stewart.
I'll leave after the last thing I say.
Hold on, hold on. Folks. Okay, Sergeant? Sergeant?
Yes. But I wanna say this last thing and I wanna say, this is the reason, examples of this. This is why Jake Gardner's father pushed those kids. This is reasons, just like this, this is the reason that that man pushed those kids and provoked them because he's an elder. And I'm gonna leave, give me five seconds, I promise you. He's an elder. He's seen all this, he's seen the years and the, and the decades of this happening up until this day. He doesn't wanna change, why would Jake and everybody else feel that they have to change? When you let people in here like that, you'll never see a change. And then you'll sit up here and keep yawning and, and making, checking your social media and making sure your grandkids are where they're supposed to be. And not actually taking care of the city like you're supposed to do. You're underpaid, where?
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Trying to figure it out, it's nice suits up here.
Brianna Larson?
Just on the record, super quick, didn't know I'd be speaking today. I clearly believe that birds are real, it's just a shirt. Just wanted to throw it out there. But I'm Brianna Larson, I live at 118 North 34th Street. So, I would just like to start off by saying that I think that the treatment of the black community and people of color in this city and the country as a whole is absolutely disgusting and horrifying. As white people, we need to do better. I personally will never understand the struggles of black people, but I will stand with you in solidarity any way that I can. It is simply not enough to just not be racist, we need to be anti-racist. So, moving forward, the extension of this quote, "state of emergency" and subsequent curfew is not needed. We do not live in a police state, so why are we treating it as such? Protests have been peaceful until the police have shown up. I've seen people get tear gassed, beat with batons, had flashbangs thrown at them and shot with rubber bullets. These rubber bullets were not created to be shot at people, but at the ground. The people that you're supposed to speak for did not come out to a riot, so why are we directing the police and the National Guard to prepare for one? I saw police officers tackle a young black man on Saturday afternoon on 72nd and Dodge because he accidentally stepped off of a curb. The instigators of violence are not the people. Curfews in the states of emergency are just another way for our city to oppress the voices of black people, people of color and the working class. Why are officers taking knees with people and then the minute the cameras turn off, they rush to arrest as many people as they can? The messages the city sends on social media and this meeting today versus what the people you're supposed to be serving or experiencing in the streets are not synonymous. If the city of Omaha wants this to stop, you will convict Jake Gardner of murder. The state of emergency will not be extended and elected officials will work with the black community to turn decades of oppression and injustice into a collaborative experience focused on equity. In conclusion, I encourage you to consider the real state of emergency the city of Omaha is about to have on our hands. The eviction of hundreds of poor families in Omaha is about to occur and unless the city of Omaha acts, you're about to have a public housing crisis on top of a pandemic. If you have the money to mobilize and militarize the police against your people, surely you have the money to prevent poor communities from being evicted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tyler Davis? Annette Harris, you're next.
Hello, my name is Tyler Davis. I live at 1302 North 32nd Street. I came here as a white person to listen because that's what I've been told to do my entire life, is listen. And what I saw here was genuinely something I'll never forget. I saw so many people come up here and tell traumatic stories. Stories that should be met with eye contact, should not be met with this. I'm looking right at you, sir, you know who you are, I have pictures. These people told you their life stories and you're still not even looking at me right now. That's so disrespectful. What's wrong with you? Did your mom not teach you to look someone in the eye that you respect? That's all I have to say, thank you.
Annette Harris?
Hello, my, my name is.
Nat Buds, you're next.
Annette Harris, 6719 Minnalausa Boulevard. I actually didn't come here to speak today, I came here to listen, but I couldn't help but to come up here and say something because I was appalled just listening to the outburst of the man that left Stewart. I believe he said his name was. Before Stewart left, Stewart said, "God, God bless America, this country. God bless the people who built this country. Our ancestors built this country on our backs with blood, sweat, tears. We died building this country." And for us to not even be appreciated hundreds of years later, it's sad that we have to have an ordinance made just for our lives to be protected. That's what this ordinance is about. This ordinance is about protecting people of color. It's sad that we have to have laws made to protect us. Why? I don't understand why. I appreciate this step and I am all for it, but there's definitely gonna be, there's gonna need to be more work done, more work tied to it. We're gonna need to hold the police more accountable. I wouldn't be surprised if it was mostly officers violating this ordinance. So, what's gonna be done if that is the case? Is there gonna be a committee that's put together to help make sure that things are done properly? Because as you see, this man was released after we all watched the video of him murdering a young man. I have four sons, aged 25, 23, 20, and 17. One of my sons is 6'6", almost 300 pounds. I fear for my sons' lives every time they're not around me. I don't know, when, if I hear something of a young man getting in the scuffle with the police or shot or killed, it, it gives me anxiety. If I can't reach my sons or I call them and they don't answer, I'm worried about them. And that's sad because we should not be, we should not have to worry about our children. My daughter is sitting there, she's 10 years old, and she told me that she's afraid of the cops. How many of your children are afraid of the cops? We have to have different conversation with our children than you have with yours. You guys don't have to tell your children what to do or what to say when they leave the house if a police officer pulls them over. I'm sorry, I'm upset and I'm hurt. I met with the young man's brother, I met with the young man that got killed, his brother. And the hurt in James Skirlock's brother's face will stay with me for the rest of my life. That boy died a hero, just as everyone else is saying. After watching that video, we all saw that there was a scuffle that ensued. Shots were fired. I didn't particularly see shots fired in the air, I don't know how if you're scuffling on the ground. To me, that was attempted murder for the two young men that was scuffling with this gentleman. Scott, shots were fired. This young man protected everyone around him. He sacrificed his life to save his cousin's life, his friends, and everyone else around him. There was a young lady here earlier, Jamie, she said she was a witness, she said she was there. She said she heard this man yelling racial slurs to them. They denounced that on the news. They said, "No, that wasn't the case, no racial slurs were heard." There was witnesses there that said that was the case. There were witnesses there that said the man was antagonizing these young men, brandishing his gun, being dreadful. How is it that this man was not charged? Not only that, we all know he had the gun illegally. I can't leave my house with my pistol under my shirt loaded. If I did that, I probably would have been received with bullets. I wouldn't have been, you know, taken into custody and probably given coffee and cigarettes or whatnot. Let's talk about what happened and figure out how we can get you home in a couple of hours. I probably would have been dead had the roles been reversed, colors been reversed. This, we, we, it would be a totally different outcome, I'm sorry. It would be a totally different outcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
You can wrap up or you finished?
I'm done, I'm done, thank you.
Is it Nate or Nat Buds? Anthony Connor? Oh, I'm sorry, Nat.
Hello, my name is Nat Buds. I did not plan on speaking today, but here I am, really upset. So, I decided to quickly throw what I could together, type it out. And I am from Ashland, Nebraska, and I just recently moved to Omaha, Nebraska, 4532 William Street. Sorry if I don't make eye contact with you, I've got a lot written down here. I agree on creating the offense of hate intimidation, ordinance 55. I agree on creating the offense of hate intimidation ordinance 55. I attended the peaceful protest in downtown Omaha on Saturday evening. I came out around 9:30 and walked to the gas station to grab several bottles of water because I knew that cold water would help dilute the chemicals and tear gas that cause your body to completely convulse. In addition, I found out later by my own experience that the use of tear gas on an individual makes your vision blur, your body go into fight mode and try to expel all of the chemicals that are running through your eyes, your nose, mouth, throat, and lungs. I still can't believe that this, as well as many other weapons, were being used against peaceful protesters in my hometown this past week and weekend. The entire evening of Saturday, the racist murder of an innocent protester, James Skirlock, and the hateful tactics used by the police that I had seen that night and the evening following on social media are completely disgusting me as an Omaha citizen. James Skirlock was 22 years old, I am 21 years old. I can't help but to think that maybe in a few months when I turn 22, I could be dead. But the reason as to why this is far less likely for me is due to the fact that I am a white individual. The murder of James Skirlock was a racist hate crime, and the thing that is not being addressed enough in our Omaha community is the racism around us every single day, and our families and our city, our own police force, and it kills. It is killing the Black community physically and mentally. Growing up with my white privilege and my sheltered innocence, I have always wanted to help people, and I was told throughout my childhood that I could help by fighting for my country. I was inspired to be a paramedic, a firefighter. I was inspired throughout my teen years as well to serve as a soldier, either in the National Guard so that I could help civilians, or joining the Air Force up until this very December when I graduated college. Because as a civilian, I believed, naively may I add, that our government and the people who represent us here are to help and take care of our people. Our law enforcement was here to keep us safe. Last night, I saw footage of angry racist and scared armed National Guardsmen and women in downtown Omaha throwing peaceful protesters' bodies down and cuffing them, making arrests, even trying to throw the press down and cuff them because they wouldn't even listen to the fact that they were yelling, "I am press, I am press." Only until the press had to scream that they were there only to document. I realize in these past few months that I will never stand in a military force or in a law enforcement because I know now that maybe I would have been standing in front of a large group of peaceful protesters, just wanting to be heard, fighting for their rights, against my own beliefs on keeping the Black community and everyone who believes in the movement safe. I'm gonna reiterate that, if I would have gone into the Air Force or the National Guard, I would have been standing in front of protesters this past weekend, doing something that I had never wanted to do, firing bullets at people that I have never wanted to fire bullets at, never even wanting to hurt people like that. And I am so happy I never made that choice. I have always just wanted to help people, and I was misled. I'm almost finished, I promise. I am glad that I am peacefully protesting in the streets for the rights of others now rather than standing for a government I once thought in my innocence was here to help us, even if I am being hit with rubber bullets, pepper bombs, and tear gas. Being hit with those things are far as, those things isn't far as bad as having your neck knelt on for nine minutes like George Floyd, having been shot and murdered in the neck twice by a white supremacist like James Skirlock, and every other peaceful Black person that has been murdered due to racism. This is in our backyard. I'm going to use my white privilege to stand with my Black community and to be loud for the community because the Black community is still being immensely oppressed even after 400 years. I urge every part of the city council to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. Anthony Connor, president of the Omaha Police Office Association. Our address is 13445 Crier Avenue. We're here in support of proposed Omaha Municipal Ordinance 20-13. It's been a long day already, so I'll keep my comments pretty short as much as I possibly can. This is another tool in the toolbox for law enforcement and for prosecutors when we have the cases where race, or gender, or whatever protected class is being targeted by suspects on cause. There is times in the city of Omaha, we do have these problems, and because of that, I think this ordinance is a good tool for the prosecutors and for police officers to have. Obviously, we all know what's going on right now. It's important that we all stand up to hate and to bias, and this is an opportunity for the city prosecutor's office and the mayor who also proposes ordinance and the city council to show support for the hate and bias that's going on right now. Is there any questions for me before I leave? All right, thank you guys, have a good day.
Thank you. Greg Gonzalez, deputy chief. And after this, we'll move to the people who have registered by Zoom, and we'll begin with Mr. Clay Akarudalu Weaver.
Good afternoon, members of the city council. Greg Gonzalez, Omaha Police Assistant Chief, 505 South 15th Street. So today, on behalf of the chief of police at the police department, we certainly support the proposed resolution by our city prosecutor. I've been in law enforcement 27 years, and I'm gonna keep this short just for purposes of all the positive energy that's been in the room. I don't think there's a question you're gonna support this. But I've been on a hate crimes committee with the U.S. Attorney's Office in the past, and I could tell you that this proposed resolution will allow law enforcement on a local level to have a little bit more authority to investigate and prosecute individuals that get involved in hate activity against protected classes. So although many of the individuals in the room today probably don't realize it, this is what I would call trailblazing resolution for police officers. So Mr. Cousy should be commended for bringing this forward. This is obviously not a good time because of all the emotions, and I heard somebody tell me the other day that whether we're in law enforcement or not, this tragedy that occurred in Minneapolis and what occurred in Omaha feels different. And I could tell you, being in law enforcement 20 years, it does. So I appreciate your time, and God bless everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Akarudalu, or I'm gonna butcher this name, but Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Proceed.
Clay Akarudalu Weaver.
Thank you. Your address?
My address is 6710 Fourth Street, Lubbock, Texas, 79416.
Please proceed, you have three minutes.
So I have three minutes, and I had a speech that I did prepare, but I'm not going to go off of my feet. I decided to go a little rogue, and the reason being is because I've heard a lot of passion in this, and it kind of sparked me a little bit. I was assaulted on October 27th of 2018, and left me with a scar on my face, and my attacker received 12 months probation. And part of that, the reason why, is because Omaha Police Department did not do their job in documenting this correctly. I took this all the way to eternal affairs, and I still didn't see any justice. So the reason why I'm deciding to go rogue is because, even with this being passed, my question is, are you all gonna hold your police department accountable as well? I am a trans Black man who was assaulted in a place where I shouldn't have been. I was simply trying to eat tacos with my friends, and I stood up to a man who decided to come over to our table and express his disgust for us sitting there proudly eating our tacos. He decided to say in a derogatory manner how disgusted he was with us, and he decided to say, "Oh, what is this sitting at the table? Uh, is that a guy, is that a girl?" And he expressed this laughing with his friends at the table. He waited for us to come outside, and he attacked me while I was outside, and stabbed me in the face where I had to get 18 stitches. I still have a scar to this day. But because Omaha Police Department decided to document it as he wanted to take a picture with us because we were dressed up for Halloween, which is in the police report, and also decided to put that I was intoxicated, which I was not, I only had one beer because I was performing at a charity event that night, he was not held accountable nor was he charged with a hate crime. I went forth, and I went to different officers, and I would like to thank Detective Dose, who was the only person in the police department who tried to do something. But because this document, the police report, was not documented correctly, this man was not held accountable. I sat in a courtroom and I listened to different low-class crimes, and one that stuck out to me was a man whose dog got out of the yard and attacked the neighbor's cat. This man was charged with a fine and 12 months probation, the same as my attacker. So basically, your judicial system told me that my life was less than an animal's, that I wasn't worth nothing more than an attacked cat. Because me being a trans Black man, and being proud of the fact that I am a trans Black man, that I should have just been quiet and done nothing and allowed this person to attack me sitting at the table doing nothing but eating tacos with my friends after a charity event.
Thank you.
I was not able to go and paint pumpkins with my Sunday school children the next day because I was getting my face cold up until 7 o'clock in the morning. Because your OPB failed to mention that this man decided to come to my table and antagonize my LGBTQIA+ community as well as myself for being a Black trans man sitting at the table because he was also Black. Hate goes way further than just color, y'all need to understand that. Being a part of the LGBT community, it has its own problems within itself. Being a Black trans man, I have to fear for my life every single day, every single day.
Thank you.
I'm already weaponized because I'm Black, and I'm weaponized because I am a trans man. So this need to be passed, but you also need to hold your police department accountable as well for being homophobic, transphobic, and any other phobic they may have in their heart.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Gary Notchman or Nochman? Gary? Please proceed. Name and address, and then your three minutes will begin.
Good afternoon, my name is Gary Nochman, 333 South 132nd Street in Omaha. I'm the regional director for the Plains State's Office of the Anti-Defamation League, one of the leading anti-hate organizations in the country. ADL was founded in 1913 with the mission to stop the defamation of the Jewish people and to secure justice and fair treatment to all. And I'm sad to say that our mission is as relevant today as it was then. Simply put, hate in many forms is intolerable, and we must collectively embrace the idea that it is unacceptable in a civilized society. I thank you for the opportunity to share with you my support for this ordinance. According to the ADL's cutting-edge hate tracker found at adl.org, over the past 10 years, Omaha alone has experienced an average of 7.58 crimes per year. Two-thirds of those were related to race. 18% were based upon gender, sexual identity, or orientation, and 15% were religious in nature. Nationally, hate crimes have increased 12% year over year. Race, age, gender, ethnicity, color, creed, religion, sex, marital status, sexual orientation, gender identity, physical or mental disabilities are not measures of our worth or our contribution to society. They cannot be glass ceilings that prevent equal opportunity for all. Most importantly, they are not passport stamps to prevent entry to fair treatment to all. Systemic injustice and inequality require systemic change. The coronavirus pandemic, the very real explosion of racist murders and divisive comments made by national leaders can only continue to inflame and injure vulnerable communities. We must continue to address the very real issues of jobs, housing, and healthcare. We must continue to speak out against racism, antisemitism, xenophobia, hate, and discrimination of all kinds. We see the fires burning every night. We hear the pleas for change. Now more than ever, we must listen to the message that inequality needs to be addressed, and we must not let it become overshadowed by deflection. Focusing on the violence and looking for scapegoats cannot take away from the need to address national hate crime and domestic terrorism laws. Blaming the other for disobedience does not provide an excuse to be puree. It is critical that the core message is not lost. Inequality in any form is not acceptable. These are the very reasons why we support and applaud Mayor Stotter's effort to stem hate in our community with his ordinance. It bravely goes beyond the Nebraska state hate crime laws and its inclusiveness. Let us seek to advance society for all of its members. We did not come this far only to come this far. Please join me in supporting this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Wendy, yes, you're ready. Name and address, and then your time will begin.
My name is Wendy Goldberg, 13136 Faith Plaza. I am the executive director of the TriFaith Initiative. At TriFaith, we celebrate religious diversity as an asset. We are the only interfaith experiment of our kind in the world, and so we have a special opportunity to combat bigotry in all forms by cultivating inclusive environments for building relationships and understanding in Omaha, Nebraska. We have learned that people are hard to hate up close. I don't need to review statistics to know in my heart that hate is on the rise. We are a nation in crisis. The FBI's 2018 report on hate crime shows another marked increase, particularly for religiously motivated hate crimes. Of the 1,419 reported hate crime incidents, they occurred that occurred due to religious bias. They happened in our homes and our churches, synagogues, mosques, in our schools, on our roads, in our parking lots, and offices. There is so much trauma, addiction, and pain underneath hate. If we are to move towards harmony, we must get to know each other. We must hold individuals accountable for acts of hate. We support the creation of the hate intimidation offense of the Omaha Municipal Code to address criminal acts. We celebrate that this ordinance goes beyond the Nebraska state hate criminal law in its inclusiveness. We believe a vote of approval for this ordinance will send a message that Omaha City's council sees hate intimidation as a punishable violation and is unacceptable. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Brooke Mashak, actually.
Thank you.
5114 South 13th Street and 4609 Cass Street. I had to write this down so I could keep my cool because I'm pretty upset and I don't want to run my mouth. Let me begin by expressing gratitude and love to each and every one of you listening. These are heavy days, and I appreciate your time, concern, and consideration. I am in support of the city council's creation of this ordinance, but like others, I echo that it is not enough. Author Ibram Kendi notes, "It's not enough for one to be not racist, one must be anti-racist." Our community has not yet done the real hard work of dismantling white supremacy and the evil it creates. If it is true that we do not hold white supremacy as a core American ideal or value, then this needs to be reflected in our rules, regulations, laws, policies, and in the values of those we elect, because it is not a question. If I am white, I hold a position of great power and privilege in this society. If you are a white cop, mayor, police chief, police officer, city council member, or district attorney, that power is multiplied exponentially. While I too want justice and peace, that justice and peace must be anti-racist justice and peace. I do not want things to return to normal as our tone-deaf mayor stated, and I will not, quote, "support blue blindly." I want anti-justice, anti-racist justice. I want anti-racist city council, I want an anti-racist mayor. If we must have a police force, then I want an anti-racist police chief, and I want anti-racist police. I want anti-racist laws on the books and an anti-racist DA who recognizes that a person's right to run into the streets with a gun in defense of property does not supersede an unarmed protester's right, James Skirlock's right to defend himself against a deadly weapon, and that any claim of self-defense should be proven in a court of law and judgment served by a jury of one's peers. I want an anti-racist governor who can get through a conversation without othering people who don't look like him or believe what he believes. To my Black and Brown brothers and sisters listening, I see you, I hear you, I stand in solidarity with you. To the white people in the room, I respectfully ask you to take the time to listen, to witness, to connect with and educate yourself about the lived experiences of your brothers and sisters who are Black, Indigenous, and people of color, and then show them your love by using your privilege to be part of the solution. Each of us are part of the problem until we become a part of the solution. I am a part of the problem until I become a part of the solution. Finally, to the legislators and government officials listening, justice and peace will only be served when the riot gear is taken off. The police are demilitarized, and Black voices, Indigenous voices, and the voices of people of color are prioritized in the conversations about your solutions. There are others out there, others cut from the same cloth. There are others out there, others cut from the same cloth as the Minneapolis police officers that killed George Floyd, the Omaha police officers that killed Zachary Bearheels, the Jake Gardners, and the Michael Walkers, the Surfside owner Barbara, Barbara mentioned. If we know about them, you know about them. We have selected you to protect our community. It is on you to mount continuous and unending pressure to hold them accountable. Else rest assured, you will be voted out. It is not enough to be not racist. We, all of us, and importantly, our institutions, must be anti-racist. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Masak. Laura McCarville? You're on Laura.
Shit, what do I say?
Well, just how about introducing yourself and telling us your address and then your time, your three minutes will begin. You ready? Laura? All right, we'll come back to you Laura. Sally Otis? Go ahead Sally.
Thank you. Sally Otis from 6466 Cummings Street. I'm voicing support of ordinance 42241 to create the offense of hate intimidation. I regret that this ordinance is, most recently, James Skirlock and our black community are made to continually suffer with no means for justice. It's disappointing that in 2019, when this began, when this ordinance began in motion, and now in 2020, that this, that this is the most we can do. With all due respect to the police officer who called this trailblazing, I just want to be clear that to me, this is not progressive, which is why it's not receiving the warm welcome that was maybe expected when it was first created. As others have also stated, I see this as one baby step of trying to reconcile with our racist past and present, and I do thank you for that. I appreciate that while it was initially delayed due to COVID restrictions, that it is now being moved forward. But I also want to take this opportunity to implore you to not stop with this ordinance. We need you, as our city leaders and elected officials, to work with all city influencers and continue to actively dismantle the systems of oppression. Please do not stop doing the work that is necessary to make this city worthy of us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's try to go back to Laura McCarville. Laura, are you ready? Okay. We'll move on to Kara Cavill. Professor Cavill?
Thank you. I had the opportunity to speak earlier, but I'd like to reiterate that I am also in support of this ordinance, but also believe that, like many have said before, this ordinance is just a single step of many that need to be taken. And I can't emphasize enough the importance that our leaders, who are sitting in front of us today, need to take action in educating themselves about the internalized white supremacist values that exist because you live in this country and because you are white and live in this country. And it's hard work and it makes people incredibly uncomfortable, but this is the time to be uncomfortable. I want to reiterate that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kelly Hoyt? Okay. James Geiger? Thank you for waiting.
Yes, good afternoon. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
My name is James Geiger. I reside at 6170 Elm Street. I am speaking in favor of the proposed ordinance. I would first like to take a moment to recognize the individuals facilitating my being remote today. I certainly appreciate that and would also like to say that, you know, for full-time working individuals like myself, having access to the civic process that's flexible for my schedule is appreciated. I would like to echo all of the people who have spoken before me. As a white individual who lives in Douglas County and in the city of Omaha, it's not lost on me the, the, the way that I am treated differently in comparison to my black and brown brothers and sisters. And I think that this ordinance would and is an important step in moving our city forward, especially given, you know, the, the current climate following the horrific murders of Mr. Floyd and Mr. Skirlock. I will echo concerns that I have about educating the individuals who would be charged with enforcing this ordinance. What does count as a hate crime? And, and how does this apply are going to be two very important things that our, our community leaders and our law enforcement officers will need to be on the same page and, and be on an anti-racist page with regard to how this is applied. I would also like to say that it's not lost on me that it is now the 2nd of June and Pride Month, recognizing the struggles that gay and transgender individuals in our community face as well. And I, and I would like to say that it's important that gender identity and gender expression and sexual orientation are not only included in this ordinance, but also highlighted as, as being a important and very valid thing to support and to call out with regard to hate crimes and violence in our community. With that, I thank you and yield my time.
Thank you. Marty Carrington?
Marty Carrington, 102 North 54th Street. Thank you.
Please proceed.
I'm speaking as a proponent largely of the idea of this ordinance. I however have a few clarifying questions that I would ask the body to consider as you move this forward. Number one, was input for this ordinance sought from the Human Rights and Relations Department and/or the Citizens Review Board? Number two, how will this ordinance be applied to elected officials? Number three, how will this ordinance be applied to members of law enforcement, Omaha Police Department, and county and state departments as well? How would this ordinance be applicable in events such as the rallies and protests of this weekend? How would this ordinance be applied in the murder of James Skirlock, a black man who was killed by a white man? And finally, what does the training look like for this, particularly for law enforcement? How would we train law enforcement to, to act on this ordinance? How would we train law enforcement to be in compliance as well with this ordinance as with regards to anti-racist training, implicit bias training, and so forth? I ask you to consider these questions as you consider moving this ordinance forward. I, again, I am a proponent of the idea of this language largely. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. William K. Do we still have Mr. K? Okay. We had a few people who had signed in to speak as proponents who didn't catch up before we moved to the internet. Tamika Meese?
Good afternoon again. My name is Tamika Meese. I reside at 4815 North 148th Circle. I am in support of ordinance 55, the offense of hate intimidation, which is a small step, but again, I am in support as long as it applies to everyone, including law enforcement, our city leaders, our, our government officials, as to lead by example and to understand that words are a form of hate intimidation, such as referring to African-American leaders as "you people," and to enforce this for everyone that is in violation of this ordinance with action regardless of who they are. Eliminate the white privilege, the political connections, and the economic status. If we don't enforce these laws and policies that you are proposing that we put into place, then it's all for nothing and we're right back where we started. I would also advise that with implementing this, that law enforcement and officials are trained in what this means and to be trained on how to apply it. And in that, training also include effective diversity, inclusion, and equity training facilitated by someone that is diverse, okay? Someone that has walked a mile in those shoes and can train you based on their experiences and how to go about this in the proper manner. I also want to touch on... I'm, I'm sorry, I'm trying not to get emotional with this, okay, and also be mindful of my time. I also want to touch on how important it is for our government officials, our law enforcement officers, and anyone that is tied to enforcing the law in our state, in our city, be properly trained and educated on how the actions of the hate intimidation affects those that it is against. Because what I saw just yesterday, I saw so much empathy and compassion being displayed during the press conference by Don Klein, which ultimately resorted to no charges, and this speaks volumes. So I ask that you educate yourselves and provide the necessary training to everyone that is involved with the law enforcement, everyone that represents our city, everyone that represents our state, to remove the bias to ensure that the law applies to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Derek Hurd? Andrew Parr, you're next.
Well, my name is Derek Hurd. My address is 2305 Arlington Place. So I didn't plan on coming here to speak at all. I actually came down here to speak to David Mitchell, who was sitting right there, about a Juneteenth celebration that we're gonna throw this year. But, you know, there was another gentleman that told me that if I didn't speak, then, I mean, there's a lot of voices that need to be heard. So anyways, I wanted to go over a few things. One, while we've been all sitting here actually, Governor Tim Walz actually made a tweet saying, "Our Minnesota Department of Human Rights Today filed a civil rights charge against the MPD." And he tagged them and said, "The MM Human Rights will investigate the department's policies, procedures, and practices over the past 10 years to determine if they engage in systematic discriminatory practices." So I feel like something like that here in our own city would be definitely a step towards a lot of change. I just wanted to kind of share my experiences as well as far as like the protesting goes and Black Lives Matter. Speaking of which, black lives do matter and when people hear that, they think that we're saying black lives matter more than other lives or something along those lines. But what Black Lives Matter is really saying, like that gentleman over there mentioned white lives matter. Of course, we know white lives matter. We know native lives matter. We know everyone's life matters. But right now with all this oppression, all this bigotry that we've been going through for so many years, it seems that black lives don't matter. So we're like, you know, hey, we matter too, you know? So, um, it's just, it's crazy living in Nebraska, you know, even Pete Ricketts is sitting there. You people, like, that's, it's not cool. I appreciate you paying attention, by the way, sir. I know you're all tired. I know you've all been working. I've been tired, barely able to eat too and, you know, it's just, it's crazy. Like, even this morning, one of my white friends asked me, he said, "Where does, with the pursuit of happiness, where does one person's happiness begin where another one ends?" And that brings me back to when I was doing security for Bubba Sparks a couple of months ago. So there was a Klansman that showed up and just sitting there, you know, in his Klan outfit staring me in the eye. And I'm a black man doing security. This dude's tall. He was big. I, I've been lifting a lot, so of course I'm a little bit bigger now, but back then I was not.
I couldn't tell.
Back then I was not though, and, you know, it was just, it's, it's crazy that he was allowed to sit there and protest, which is his right, even though it's wrong. It was his right to do that in his Klan gear. But in Lincoln, my buddy just wanted to see with his own two eyes what was going on. He showed up to the protest, just non-biased, and witnessed a lot of people getting shot with rubber bullets and pepper spray for no reason. And that's just, it's crazy. I, I went to protest myself. I'm gonna wrap it up. I went to a protest myself and, you know, I, I experienced peace. It felt like a music festival or something. It was honestly amazing and, you know, I just feel like with the points I made at the beginning of discussion, we can definitely make a big change. And yeah, since I'm here, I definitely wanted to speak. Hopefully one day I don't have to walk around with these goggles, afraid to be pepper sprayed just because I'm downtown in my own city.
Thank you. Andrew Parr?
My name is Andrew Pace. I reside at...
Oh, I'm sorry, mispronounced it.
It happens a lot. Forgive my chicken scratch. My name is Andrew Pace. I reside at Lincoln, uh, 3716 Lincoln Boulevard. I'm not up here to speak for the community. I believe that they've spoken for themselves plenty. I'm not up here to provide my position. I'm up here to provide an assessment of the logic behind the James Gardner decision. Two postulates were put forth by the City of Omaha during the release of James Gardner that caught my attention. The first postulate, they stated that it is illegal to use, it is illegal to use lethal force to defend private property in the state of Nebraska. The second postulate that caught my attention was that lethal force is justifiable if one is fearful of losing their life to stand your ground law. I will explain the inconsistency of the City of Omaha's application of its own laws. How could James Gardner be in a position in which he could fear for his life using justified force under the law of the state of Nebraska without first violating the first postulate of using lethal force to defend property? James Gardner needlessly went downtown looking for conflict, otherwise he would not have brought an unlawfully held firearm to defend a private business. The logic is inconsistent. In conclusion, Gardner was in no way legally justified in his actions and should be prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law. May history judge your actions. And to Mayor Gene Stofford, forgive my accent, but I humbly say to you, "In the case city out." Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jamie Florsky? We'll now move to the opponents for those who are opponents registered to speak in person at the meeting. Our first registered speaker is Doug Kagan. Okay? The second person, Pierce Carpenter. Come on down. Tell us your name and address and then your three minutes will begin.
Pierce Carpenter, 4832 Farnham. I am, you know, I kind of agree with the idea of the law, but I'm just, I'm opposed to it because I just, I don't think you can legislate trying to make people nice and emotions and feelings. And I think that's what the law does. I think it's a bad idea. I mean, Calvin Coolidge said... I mean, Calvin Coolidge said, "It's more important to kill bad bills than good ones." I think this is a bad bill, and I think you guys should vote it down. Thomas Sowell says, "When your response to everything wrong with the world is to say there ought to be a law, you are saying you hold your freedom very cheap." I hold my freedom very high. I don't want any more of it taken away. I think this law takes it away. What it does is it adds to the crushing legislation, regulation onus that's on the population and the businesses already, and I just, I think we can do without it. My position is the law does make hate speech illegal. I talked to James Dowding, who is, he's some type of head of administrative support for the city council. And I talked to him at length, and he, and I agreed that if I committed some type of offense this week and then, and used some type of a hate speech phrase, and then nothing would become of the hate speech phrase. But if I do it a month and a half from now after this is implemented, then I would be prosecuted and maybe get another thousand-dollar fine or another month in jail because of the hate feat, hate speech phrase. So, you know, the hate speech would be used to verify hate intimidation. And so the bottom line is this is an end run or a workaround to get hate speech as an illegal prosecutable offense, and we don't need that. We don't need to have that taken away from our First Amendment rights. Okay, the last thing is the law is a little bit vague. I mean, if you read the law, it's, it goes on provided by section 110 in accordance with section, subsection A, which, you know, it's got a lot of that stuff in there, but nobody really knows what that is unless you just looked it up. And it's just, we just don't need another law on top of all the laws we have, especially something that's against our constitutional rights. In order to implement a law like that, somebody's gonna have to keep a repertoire of what is hate speech. What does somebody have to say to determine that this was a hate speech act? So somebody's gonna have to have a list. Now, if it's not you guys, it's gonna be the city prosecutor or something, but that list will exist because things will come up that'll be questionable, and they'll go back and look at the history, and it just doesn't seem like it's something that you really want to put in the hands of anyone. Somebody earlier said there was only seven possible hate crimes in the City of Omaha every year, and I would posture, do you even really need the law? So overall, to close up, I'm, I think it's a bad idea. I think it steps on our First Amendment rights, and I think it's, it's pretty vague, and you shouldn't vote it in. I'm against it.
Thank you. The next opponent is William Stowell. Mr. Stow. And if there's no more opponents in person, then we'll then move to opponents registered to speak online.
Thank you.
Name and address, and then your time will begin.
Good afternoon. My name is William Stowell, and I live at 15280 Pepperwood Drive, excuse me. And I'm here, I'm gonna echo some of Pierce's comments. I think this gets into the realm of free speech because that's what they're using, and that shouldn't be abridged. Also, I think it's very obtuse. They're dealing with stuff like intent to intimidate, and intimidation is something that is perceived by the person that's being intimidated, and perceived race, color, any of those things, but these are all things that are just kind of general, you know, terms. There's nothing here that's really concrete that can say, hey, that was, that was perceived to be religious, or that was perceived to be anti-racial or whatever. There's, there's nothing here that's really hard that you can hang your hat on unless you have the list that Pierce put out and said, "All right, you use this term, this term, this term, and that's, we're gonna hold you accountable to that." Instead of this, and I call this a feel-good ordinance because I don't really see it being enforceable with all those wishy-washy kinds of things in it. Rather, I think there should be an ordinance put forth by the council that clarifies very clearly the protected classes, what they're protected from, okay? And give the police the tools then to go and act accordingly to straighten things out. But I don't think you can legislate intent or feelings of people or whatever. I like, I love robust, passionate debate, and I think that should continue. I don't think we need to get the race involved with it. If it does, it does, but let's not nip at the edges of our freedom of speech. You guys have been elected to protect that, and I hope you do. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to the opponent registered to speak online, Levon Stennis Williams. Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Levon Stennis Williams. I'm at 8919 North 56th Avenue Circle, Omaha, Nebraska 68152. I'm speaking in opposition to the proposed creation of the hate intimidation defense to the municipal code, not for the reasons that have been given by others, but my concern is that while this and other ordinances such as these appear on their face to be, to advance protection for members of protected classes, what usually happens is that oftentimes these laws end up working against the people whom they were designed to protect. For example, the Department of Justice and the FBI statistics and research shows that while nationally, Black Americans make up thirty-two, thirteen percent of the population, they're more likely to be twenty-eight percent of those victimized by hate crimes, but yet thirty percent of the rest and those, of those who have been arrested and convicted for hate crimes. So while they make up thirteen percent of our population, they're thirty percent more likely to be arrested for hate crimes than any other person in the population. Currently, our state laws provide for hate crime enhancements. However, like most states, Nebraska really imposes enhancements because they allege difficulty often cited by police and prosecution in proving intent. This ordinance will present the same challenge as court to its enforcement is proven intent by the accused to intimidate. This has, this will become yet another law based on symbol but not substance, which gives members of the protected class a false sense of protection for biased harassment. An example that we probably all remember all too well is a fireman recently uttered the word "white power" to a Black woman before punching her in the back but was not charged, excuse me, with a hate crime. Furthermore, the ordinance targets acts not speech, which is the most cited offense when reporting hate crimes. Most forms of harassment against racial and ethnic minorities and members of the LGBTQIA community is verbal. So when the victim who are targeted with racial, ethnic, and sexual slurs oftentimes protect themselves or show some type of disdain for the slurs that have been hurled against them, they can now be charged under this particular ordinance for intimidating those who oftentimes have precipitated the attack. So however, my greatest concern with this ordinance, which forms my opposition, is the potential for its use against minorities, especially Black males, who are already disproportionately represented in our criminal justice system. Under this ordinance, a white man or woman can call the police on a Black male based on no more than a stare. An example is if Councilman Gray's stare was interpreted, it's all gonna, it's oftentimes gonna be more, looked at more sinister than the stare from the other white council members. This ordinance, if passed, will be weaponized against mainly Black men. We witnessed on national television of the white Central Park dog walker who called the police on Black males, a Black male who dared to ask her to leash her dog. She lied about his demeanor as a threat to her safety. We heard about the group of Black golfers in California who were deemed too loud and threatening to white country club members who were challenged by the Black group who defended their right to be there. Examples are plentiful of white people who feel uncomfortable with the presence of Black people being places where they don't think they belong. The ordinance is a license to use our police to harass racial and ethnic minorities who will become vulnerable to false police reporting, which will strain, further strain police and community relations. Finally, the ordinance, if passed, does not go far enough. If the city wishes to take a stand on racial intimidation, it should criminalize false reporting as an act of racial prejudice when it's shown no reasonable basis exists to believe a crime was committed and the caller was fabricating a crime as a pretext to mass unlawful discrimination and racial harassment. What I would ask you to do is to please, if it's possible, lay this over. You've heard wonderful testimony from the community. Get more input so that you do put forth an ordinance that's more simple, excuse me, that's more substance and symbolism. If you pass this law, what you're doing is putting Black men in the target to be harassed under the same law that was supposedly designed to protect them. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I missed one speaker as a proponent who I will call in my time, Ms. Balker, so don't go away. Councilmember Gray, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I do, well, let me say first of all that I will be supporting the ordinance. However, I do have several of the concerns that Ms. Stennis Williams has because ordinances, as many of us know, ordinance when they're written can be a double-edged sword. They could, they could have the intent of doing the right thing and doing what we want to accomplish, but there's also sometimes in the language, in the way that we write, that sometimes we need to, sometimes the, there, because of the double-edged sword sometimes that exists, it can be used in some of the ways that Ms. Stennis Williams talked about. But my reason for supporting it is because I think we gotta start. I mean, we've made some, we've made some headway, and I think this is another step in the right direction if it's used right. If it's not used right, then we need to, we need to bring that back and, and, and talk about it further. If it is being used right, we need to probably enhance it. So I'll be supporting it today, supporting this ordinance today. I did want to say a couple of things, though, that, that I have, I have been encouraged this day, not only by the testimony of people who have come forward, many of whom are hurting, but I've also been encouraged by the number of calls and emails that I have gotten today from CEOs of various companies who genuinely want to not only sit down and do something, but do something that is meaningful and long-lasting. And so I'll be supporting this legislation because I think we've got to, we've got to, we've got to have something on the books, number one, but number two, we've got to monitor it and make sure that it's not being used inappropriately. And number three, if it is a tool that works and needs to be enhanced, we probably need to enhance it. But again, I've, I've been encouraged by the testimony today. I've been encouraged by the number of CEOs that are now approaching eight individuals who have called me or emailed me or texted me. And I also shared, and the last thing I'll say, because I don't want to prolong this, but I also wanted to share with you all that I had received some news recently that I shared with the Chair of our Law Committee, that Mr. Gardner, as well as the bar next to him, they have been evicted as of this day. So with that, I'll, that's all I had, Mr. President, and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Councilmember Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm assuming you're gonna allow Mr. Cuzzi some additional time.
Yes.
So if, maybe now's the appropriate time to come down, and maybe I'll let Mr. Cuzzi give his additional testimony or rebuttal, if you will, before I ask the questions because I'm sure he'll probably answer them anyway.
I'll try. And I assume the rebuttal that the council would like, sorry, is Mac Cuzzi, City of Omaha Lot Department. The rebuttal that I would make would just be to the comments about the First Amendment issue. As I indicated earlier, this is not a novel idea to Omaha. Forty-seven states, the federal government, and the District of Columbia all have laws similar to this. So I'm preparing for, I knew this would be the issue that would come up because it's the most obvious issue that would come up. I looked at Supreme Court case law, the United States Supreme Court case law on this. In 1993, the U.S. Supreme Court in a rare, by our standards, now unanimous decision, which for people who keep track of these things, did include, at that time, Justice Scalia and Justice Thomas decided that a Wisconsin hate crime law, very similar to this one, passed at constitutional muster. The Supreme Court made certain comments on the issue, saying such things as the First Amendment does not protect violence. Statements made by defendants that would otherwise or could be used, or could be protected by the First Amendment can be used to show a motive or intent. There is not a per se barrier to the admission of evidence under the First Amendment. And that's what we're talking about. We're not talking about if I called someone a name, it's, that's protected by the First Amendment. It's offensive and uncalled for, but that's protected by the First Amendment. What we're talking about is what those words indicate. If, let's see, Sergeant Connor's not here, and I don't like using council members as examples, but you don't work as well. There you go.
You have agenda-wise, you have agenda.
In a DV situation, just because someone hits their wife doesn't make it a hate-based offense. It makes it a domestic violence crime under, language under our state law, but it doesn't make it a hate-based offense. If right before I go and strike Ms. Melton and I say, "I hate women, I can't stand women in positions of authority," and I hit her, my words have manifested what my intent was. I'm not being penalized because I said, "I hate women." I'm being penalized because what those words show. It's my intent. It's like in any other crime, take hate out of it, any other crime, prosecutors always use what people say against them to show what their intent is. Why did you run that red light? Why are you speeding? Why did you murder that person? Why did you sexually assault that person? Why did you rob that bank? What they say is being what's being used against them. There was another case from the Supreme Court where the state of Virginia, check my notes, the state of Virginia in two, in the early 2000s enacted a statute that banned crossburnings with the intent to intimidate people. The Supreme Court found that to be acceptable as well. If the state of Virginia had just said, "We're banning crossburnings," it wouldn't fly because as abhorrent as it is, that is considered protected speech as a form of expression. But when you use the words that you are deemed with the intent to intimidate, that's when the First Amendment doesn't apply. This isn't affecting anyone's constitutional rights at all. People are free to express themselves in whatever manner they want. However, if those words are combined with an act, then it can become a criminal offense.
Somehow, there's not the option.
My wife wants one of these buttons, by the way.
And I do have a mic on, but there was no...
It is now, but, thanks, Mr. Cuzzi. That was one of the questions I was gonna ask. The other is, and we talked a little bit about this at pre-council this morning, just so people can be educated on the issue, too. Can you explain the difference or the reason why, even though we have at the state level, a state statute that would allow for this charge or a similar charge, why it's important in your mind to have this at the city level as an ordinance?
Sure. One reason is actually the obvious one that Mr. Councilman Gray pointed out, that I think it's important that the city has something like this. Enacting things like this do stand for things. It does send a message. So that's one aspect of it. A different thing is our state statute is an enhancement. So a Class IV felony becomes a Class IIIA felony and so on and so forth. Our case law that, from that statute, the Supreme Court requires that the sole motivation for the criminal act has to be based on one of these protected classes. So the sole reason why I hit Ms. Melton has to be that she's a woman, and I have to prove that. There could be other reasons why it happened. Maybe I was intoxicated, maybe I'm just a jerk, and that muddies it, but you can't prove it in that case. In this ordinance, it does have the language in whole or in part. So my dislike of women, factored in with maybe my alcohol use and my just general bad attitude, isn't gonna matter under this ordinance. Oftentimes, as well, prosecutors prefer to charge under our municipal ordinance. That's the more appropriate offense than the state statute. A lot of our ordinances are better written than our state statutes, and prosecutors prefer to use these because if I don't have this, then I'm forced to rely only on what the state statute says, and that I have to prove by proof beyond a reasonable doubt that the sole motivation for you striking... that the sole motivation for you striking, damaging somebody's property, whatever it may be, is based on one of those criteria. And as many people told you today, the list that we have of the protected people is more expansive than what's currently in the statute, which, if my memory is right, I don't think has been amended for quite some time.
Okay, thanks. I know it goes without saying, but I'll say it anyway for the record, that these were all hypotheticals.
Correct. For now.
Thank you, Councilmember Melton. I mean, Harding, Councilmember Melton, you're right.
Thank you. Well, and if you knew Mr. Cousy's wife, there's no way he'd be assaulting any woman of power. Mr. Cousy, could I call you back up?
Sorry, McHussey, City of Omaha Lot Department.
First, I want to thank you. You spent a lot of time on this, and this wasn't something that was whipped up last week. I mean, you were working on this last year, I know, we talked about it. I'm going to take this off for a minute so I can be more clear. What I like about this is I, I think it gives the protections for free speech based upon the analysis of the law. I like how you have this written because it is very clear. I don't believe it's vague. And the other thing is, is I know what a lot of judges have said, and they've said it in terms of the, when, when we had the pornography-type issues back in the 80s, you know what, when you see it? And, and right now, what it is, is either a judge or a jury, and in fact, most of our city ordinances that, that you would have to violate, and again, anybody that says, "Well, if I say something or just stare at somebody wrong, I can be charged with this." No, you can't. You actually have to commit another crime first. So that's what we're saying. You have to commit another crime that, another violate the ordinance. So as long as nobody's committing any crimes, this will never apply to you. So I just suggest, being lawful, be a lawful citizen, then your free, your free speech will never be taken away. And second, again, when you use that, it would have to be women. And in fact, I, you could, you might be able to hit me and call me the B-word, but that wouldn't be enough to say that it was a hate crime against women. It might be an offensive word. And again, we don't want to be prosecuting people for offensive words. People are going to get offended. I get offended, you get offended, people get offended. That's just part of living in a free society. So this has nothing to do with prosecuting people for offensive words. It's words that are used for intimidation. And, and again, that, it's not just words, it's actions. And it's that you're committing the crime in part or in whole to intimidate somebody else. So, and I like how you actually have it limited to that scope, so it can't be broadened. So I appreciate how you've drafted this ordinance as both a former prosecutor and criminal defense attorney, when, when you're both of those things and you like how the ordinance drafted. I, I think that's good for both, for both sides, moving forward in court, knowing what you need to prove or need to defend. So I just want to, I want to thank you for that and thank you for all your efforts on this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Melton. Councilmember Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Cousy, just one question, too. I want to give you a chance to repeat or respond to, that came up several times from, from those concerned about who this could apply to, who does it apply to? There are questions about, you know, does it apply to a citizen? Does it apply to a policeman? Does it apply to an elected official? Do you want a chance to answer that question?
It applies to everyone. To, I guess, put the spin on it, if Ms. Melton came up to me and says she hates men and hates men who, I don't know, took blue ties and hits me because she's talking about how much she hates men, she could be charged on it. It applies to everyone of every standing position, what have you.
Great, thank you.
So, Mr. Cousy, in terms of the ordinance, I thought it only applied to protected classes.
True, but.
So if you're a white.
I just use the term protected classes, but it does say clearly in there, race, color, creed, religion. I just use the common vernacular, but this can involve a situation where a male or a white person or whatever scenario you would want to have, it is in there that that can happen if there's evidence to prove that that's the motivation for the offense.
Thank you. Giovanna Balker, are you still with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you for your time, and thank you again for making this accessible via Zoom. I do want to mention that most people whose voices need to be heard during this time don't have the privilege to pay four hours out of a Tuesday afternoon to speak, but I will go forward. So I am in full support of item number 55. In fact, I think that the proposed ordinance to create the offense of hate intimidation is very necessary. In fact, Omaha Police Department, as previously mentioned, have used hate intimidation before they murdered Zachary Fairfield. And more recently, Jake Gardner and his father used hate intimidation to initiate the conflict that resulted in the murder of James Skirlock. He was, Gardner was told to stay home by the Omaha Police Department. He posted on Facebook on Saturday that he was going to pull 48 hours of military fire watch. He left his house, he brought his gun despite having an expired gun for men, a crime in itself. If Gardner ever feared harm to his body, as Don Klein mentioned repeatedly during his press conference yesterday, it was because of his own actions. He followed Skirlock's party, he made the confrontation physical, and then he slashed his gun, shot two morning shots, and then, and only then, is when James Skirlock tried to subdue Jake, who was an active shooter, in order to try to prevent anybody from getting shot. Let's not be forgotten that James Skirlock is the hero in this story. And yet, Don Klein, the mayor, and OPD think that no charges should be filed. This is not justice for James Skirlock, this is not justice for his family, this is not justice at all in this ordinance. It is just a small, 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 small step in the right direction. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. No further lights, we'll proceed to item 79. Madam Clerk.
Item 79, a resolution to approve an extension of a state of emergency declared by the mayor through her proclamation on May 31st, 2020, for a period of up to one week.
The first speaker to sign in as a proponent is Deputy Chief Greg Gonzalez. Oh, Mr. Bealik, Chief of Staff, the Mayor Stothers.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Marty Bealik, Mayor's Chief of Staff, 1819 Farnham Street. Last weekend was a violent weekend in the city of Omaha. You all know that, there were protests, some of them turned violent. It moved from 72nd and Dodge Street to downtown Omaha. Sunday morning, Mayor Stothers felt like she needed to take decisive action. One of the things she has, one of the tools she has available to her is the ability to install a curfew. One of the things that the curfew provides for us is the ability to reduce the crowd size. So if the crowd size obviously is smaller, then it's easier to manage, and that's a tool that she has. So what happened is, 2:00 on Sunday afternoon, she signed a, an emergency order, and with it came a curfew that went from 8:00 at night till 6:00 in the morning. When she did that, she contacted Council President Chris Jaram, I think by, by email and by, I think she made a phone call, and also to Jim Douding as well, to let you know what she was doing, because it's important to know that as city council member, she's going to install a state of an emergency, and you also need to know what the elements of it are, that there's a curfew that has serious ramifications as well. It has implications on our First Amendment rights. But what it also does is it provides law enforcement with a level of protection because now the crowd sizes are smaller. And also, I can tell you that the National Guard has been deployed, and it also gives them a tool to use so that as they go to disperse a crowd, they need to take more decisive action, they need to take enforcement action. They can do that because there's a curfew in place. What we're doing now is just simply, what you're contemplating right now is just simply extending her emergency order for another week. Now, does that mean that she's going to need an entire week of curfew to maintain law and order in the city limits of Omaha? No, but what it does is it gives her that option. So, and Deputy Chief Gonzalez is here, and she, he can be more specific, but basically what's going to happen in the city of Omaha is we're going to consider what happened last night. Last, yesterday was a rather tense afternoon because of the announcement that was made out of the county attorney's office. However, last night was relatively peaceful. If tonight's peaceful, tomorrow night, if we get through the weekend, there's events planned for this weekend that we're aware of, then the curfew will be lifted at the mayor's earliest, earliest opportunity. I'll, I'll just leave it at that. Is there any questions?
Thank you. Deputy Chief Gonzalez. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't. Okay. Councilmember Plarm.
Thank you, Mr. President. Marty, thanks for being here.
Absolutely.
Let me ask you, when this emergency order gets discussed, who is in the room? And I know this is the executive branch that's making this decision, but I, I know it's solely not the mayor. Who's making this decision with you?
I'm glad, I'm glad you asked that because it's important. She consulted with Chief Tatchmutter, she consulted with our Lot Department.
And then what is the process after these discussions with the police chief and the Law Department, yourself and the mayor? What, I know it's an emergency, I know we have to act fast, but what is the process? Who do you, who do you notify along the way? Like, is there a proper procedure that maybe you should follow on notifying different people?
I'll tell you what has, what did happen is after she consulted with the Lot Department, the chief decided curfew would be advantageous, it would be in the best interest of public safety. She signs that, and, but at the same time, she also contacted Council President Jaram, and she also contacted Chief of Staff Jim Douding so that they could disseminate that information to you. It's important that you know this information.
And that's great that she coun, she contacted another elected official, but who she didn't contact is me as an elected official. What she didn't do is contact other elected officials that I know about. So I'm not disagreeing with the decision that was made, but I get a press release on a dog park opening a week ahead of time, but somebody can't put something together to get us something before my constituents are asking me about it? This is the problem I have. It's not the decision that was made, it's the way it's played out. These are important times, these are important decisions, and if we sit here as elected officials representing a whole lot of constituents, as she does, then we should be afforded that luxury of knowing as well.
I would ask that you just understand that Sunday afternoon was a very hectic afternoon, and I know you all know that. She had a lot of phone calls to make, she had to consult with a lot of people, a lot of experts to make this decision. And don't forget, while all of this is going on, we still have COVID issues to deal with as well. So for the sake of expediency, she contacted a couple of folks affiliated with the council, hoping then that you could be informed directly after she did that.
But that wasn't the case. So as the executive branch, they should let the legislative branch know about these important decisions and not rely on other people who, we're all busy with these same sort of problems, right? When we thought COVID was the worst we were going to see, and now we're where we are, there's a problem with that. And I'm telling you about it because I have a problem about it.
And I don't disagree. The legislative branch needs to be completely informed.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. If, does anyone else have questions for Mr. Bealik? Okay, we'll go to the public hearing.
Thank you.
Mr. Harding.
Marty, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, you almost got away. Is it, is it the intent to be flexible on, I mean, the, the order that was signed, the emergency order that was signed on Sunday at, at 2:00 would therefore make it for her 72 hours to expire tomorrow at 2:00?
Exactly.
This, as I understand it, request is so that there is some flexibility as to whether or not to continue that, and, and because we don't meet again until next Tuesday, that's is, and that's the reason for the ask for that additional seven days so that if it needed to be extended further, then we would at least have another meeting to consider that. But in the meantime, in the next seven days, it, it could clearly be lifted as well.
That's exactly right. And that is the mayor's intention, to stay flexible, to receive information from the Police Department that gives her an indication as to what level of public safety we're seeing in the city, and then she'll make a decision accordingly.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bealik, I have a couple of questions. First is that we don't know what, if this passes, what the order will be. So if, if the mayor's asking for authority to do a new order following 2:00 p.m. tomorrow, she's not saying to us, as the legislative body and the citizens, what that order looks like?
I, I believe.
To continue the 25-person assembly rule at 8:00, or, I mean, what?
I think you, I think our Law Department would advise you, if, if you were to pose that question to them, that what you're going to do here, if, for example, that you continue her emergency order for another seven days, everything that came with the original emergency order will come with. In other words, the curfew will, the 25-people limit, and all of the other exceptions that were created at that time. Those will automatically be extended for another week, another seven days, unless the mayor chooses to modify that original order. And I, I will tell you that one of the areas that we'll be most sensitive to is the 25-person limit because we're starting to, people are concerned about that.
And the final thing I want to ask you before we get to the, to the proponents in the public hearing is, what is the mayor's position as to those like me who are concerned about just the mere presence that this order creates for conflict? Meaning, I want to peacefully protest, but you know, I work till 5:00 at night, and so I go, by the time I get home, I feed my kids or I change and go downtown, it's, it's 6:30 or 7:00, and then I'm told to go home or get arrested, and they're greeted with people who are police and National Guard, who are in their full regalia, assuming, you know, worst-case scenario possibilities, so they have to protect themselves. But just that, that situation, so people who, who are eager for de-escalation, for trying to get the community healed and through this.
So, so I'm perfectly aware of the testimony that's occurred here earlier this afternoon. I, I'm perfectly aware of the emotions that are behind all of this. Many people don't like to get back to a sense of normalcy, but to answer your question, if all we were seeing in our city right now were peaceful protests, then I wouldn't be up here talking about a curfew and nobody else would either. The problem is the situation over the weekend has escalated. It's resolved, to the point of violence, it's resulted in extensive destruction of property, it's been, it's, it's resulted in a death, it's resulted in serious crimes where you just can't sit back and say, "Well, okay, but there's a First Amendment, so we're going to look the other way." I think the mayor is thinking, we can have a curfew, we can preserve everybody's right to protest, we protect their First Amendment rights, but still, say, at 8:00, you know, everybody needs to go home, the crowd sizes will become smaller, then it becomes dark, and we can take enforcement action if the crowd starts violating our laws.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Bealik before we go on to the public hearing? Yes, Mr. Harding? Did, oh, Mr. Festerson, you're after Mr. Harding.
I do have remarks and some questions, but I also want to hear both the public hearing perhaps first.
All right, do you have to leave, Marty? Is that what's happening?
No, matter of fact, I have to testify on the item after this one, so I'm here for the long haul.
All right.
Anybody else?
Now that we know that. Okay. Mr. Harding, did you have one? Did you want to wait, or did you want to go now, Mr. Plarm?
Yeah, I'll go, I'll go.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. So more of a comment because it's, it's not fallen on deaf ears that, and I'm, I'm sure this item will pass, and again, I'm, I'm not against it. I was disappointed in the message and how it was delivered before. But with this one, keep in mind, I hear my constituents loud and clear, who may not have those jobs that allow them the luxury of guaranteed 40-hour work week, that when we pass this, there's people down the. people down the way that are affected. There's those businesses that are minimum wage jobs, your basic necessity jobs from grocery store to gas station to whatever it may be, that because of this, those employees are sent home early. Those second and third shift employees, there's a chance that place isn't open. So this is affecting the way people put food on their table. So what I'm getting at is, and I assume it also would affect transportation in the city with a certain amount of timeframe that things will have to be shut down to be where people need to be. I know you can come to and from work, but you also have to get done. So I hear that, I understand it. For me, the overriding decision I'm going to make, because I am going to support this, is going to be, you know, when there's a pothole problem, we approve stuff for extra money and extra resources to help with a pothole problem. Well, the police, I know they're working, whatever they call it, A and B shift, and they're super busy, and they're called in time and time again. For me, this is for the men and women of blue to protect them, because I know this will help them with when it turns from what we want to see as a protest to where it becomes the other way. So that's overriding my decision of, unfortunately, there's people losing lost wages because of this. So I'm sure it's going to pass. We know why we need it. But I do have a question for law, because I know somebody will ask this, so thank you, Marty.
If your question for law could wait until the public hearing is over, this was...
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you.
Is everybody good?
I appreciate it. Don't go far, Mr. Bealik. And Mr. Kratz, you stick around. Okay, good. Let's get to the public hearing and hear from the deputy chief Gonzalez.
Good evening, City Council. Greg Gonzalez, Deputy Chief Omaha Police Department, 505 South 15th Street, here to in support of the considerations for the extension of the curfew. The chief and I and our executive staff met today. It's no secret that nobody really wants to have a curfew. I think everybody in this room, including law enforcement, would much rather be home, enjoying their evening with their families. And while we appreciate a nice peaceful protest, and there have been a lot, there also have been those situations that have, there's been some civil unrest, property damage, police officers being threatened, anywhere from alcohol to urine to gasoline thrown at police officers, which is why we needed those additional resources in the city, because that small group of folks are making it bad for everybody else. Similar to the reason we're here today is, small group of law enforcement officers in Minneapolis have now made the situation worse for us nationally. So we want to work together with the community for those peaceful protests. However, we're on day eight, I think, and unfortunately, it's, there's going to be probably some several more days of what we'll call grieving for the community, but we're limited on our resources. We have probably five or six law enforcement agencies, including the National Guard, that have been helping us, and we are working 12-hour shifts, but right now, we're in a position where we are able to at least contain a lot of the protesters before that small minority have become unruly. Our Douglas County Correctional Center, we've had to make several arrests, last night over 100 misdemeanor arrests, three firearms arrests. So although we've had a lot of people, including law enforcement officers, that have walked with some of the protesters, there are some individuals that have been toting firearms, which is not good considering someone can get hurt, severely hurt. Nationally, we've had some incidents, but in particularly Omaha, we're just asking for your consideration for that flexibility for the next week. The chief made it real clear today, we're going to meet as a tactical group tonight. And depending on how tonight goes, I'm sure he's going to report back to the city council to make sure that if we do not need that extra curfew, that extra time, we will not use that. So I just want to make sure that we have your support, confidence in the community that if we don't need it, we certainly won't use it, because we understand that we also want life to move on as it was prior to May 25th. So if you have any questions, I'm here for you.
Thank you. Ashlyn Duval. Okay, we'll go to the opponents. Philip Colbo.
My name is Philip Colbo with Outer Spaces at 1258 South 13th Street. So I believe that the state of emergency is overreaching power and a misuse of precious community funds. I first want to take, I want you all to take note, that something that I saw yesterday, this weekend, was the de-escalation of our city, and I think what the police are thinking is that it was because, and the mayor is thinking, is because of the state of emergency, but I think that it was actually because, over the weekend, black leaders, specifically at the Malcolm X Foundation and elsewhere, called for a de-escalation of this violence, and it was successful. I watched it happen from 1:00 p.m. They had word that Jake Gardner was getting let loose, and they began spreading that word right away, and we were successful in de-escalating that. And so I think that shows us kind of what, with what Councilman Palermo was saying, that if they would have talked to our leaders, our council members, and then further our black leaders, that they wouldn't have needed this emergency, this state of emergency, because we can collaborate with leaders who are going to lead that. And I do think that, I recommend that the powers that made this oversight and lack of consultation before making this decision should have their positions reviewed. And then I wanted to also state that, I said earlier, that I think it's a misuse of community funds. An advocate at Restoring Dignity, another local nonprofit, works with refugees, said that one riot gear suit is equivalent to 50PP suits for frontline essential workers. I think that's really important to look at. I believe we should not enact the Insurrection Act here. We do need, we do not need Trump's army here. We need those funds to start healing our community.
Thank you. Tomika Mies. Tomika, are you still here? Scott Williams. Mr. Williams.
Scott Williams, 3820 Jones. Counselors, thanks for the extended session today, for allowing people's voices to be heard, and for the dedication and effort you put into your jobs. I'm opposed to extending this curfew because I don't think it's a step for our city that moves in the right direction. I have a variety of different questions and concerns about it, but mostly, this matter, this decision, this proposal to potentially go forward with continued curfew is heavy-handed and tone-deaf and paternalistic, and it's a mistake. I was surprised that the mayor's chief of staff said that the consultation was the mayor, the chief, the law department, and not any community leaders. I think that's indicative of how this decision's been made, and honestly, I think it's indicative of why the problems exist in our community now. The last speaker was exactly right. The man who was here, David Mitchell, is one of the leaders from the Malcolm X Foundation, Memorial Foundation, and he, among many others, has been telling people, stay home. And that's why we have a de-escalation in our city. Militarization of our streets, snipers on the roof, tanks, this is not de-escalation. This doesn't send the signal, go home, stay home, stay safe. This is antagonistic. This is provoking people, and extending this curfew is a further provocation. Council Jerem, Council Palermo, I appreciate your inquiries to the people who've given testimony here. Council Palermo in general, specifically, I work at a grocery store, and our stores had to close early specifically because of this, and we cannot go to work in the mornings to prepare the store because of the curfew. We had to rapidly change the work schedules and not be able to do our jobs because of this. I'm concerned about the fact that night curfews disproportionately have impacts on working people, on low-income individuals, on people of color, on black folks, and I think that that's what curfews do. It is not creating positive change in our community. It is disproportionately having negative change in our community. I'm sorry, but I can't help respond to the fact that the chief of staff came up here and said that I'm well aware of the emotions that we're here today, but immediately after that, he said, we all want to get back to normal. If he was even remotely aware of the emotions that were present here in this room today that you've heard, unequivocally, we don't want to get back to normal. That's not what we're trying to do. That was the emotion that was present in this room today. And that's what I mean when I say this decision is tone-deaf. It is not listening to the people. To say that we want to get back to normal after the conversation that's happened here today is not listening. I'm concerned about the fact that the statement was that if the crowd starts violating our laws, the point of the emergency, the point of the curfew, is that there is a new law that people are automatically violating at 8:00. It is not that people begin violating laws. It is creating a law that people are violating so that enforcement actions can be taken against people who are otherwise not violating laws. I think this is tone-deaf and a mistake, and I encourage you to oppose this.
Thank you. Thank you. Sawyer Stender, you still here? Luis Jimenez.
Luis Jimenez, 3306 Bird Street. I'm an opponent. De-escalation has been a concept that the police need to understand, and I don't understand how a curfew is to do with de-escalation at 8:00 p.m. When, like you say, working people and young people have their days already consumed with their issues, the evening is the time to then take a break. It's a perfect time to go out and demonstrate of the injustices. You know, if it was winter, it'd be dark around 6:00 p.m. We've got summers coming in, so the sunlight is going to be out until 9:00, right? People are hurting. The chief of staff says so. He can feel the emotion. So do we tell people to stay home, to be confined after months of the coronavirus restrictions? And when that ends, are we going back to police brutality that isn't being checked by our public officials? Is that the normalcy that we're talking about? I want to go back to normal, but that was back in March, that we need to go back to normal. It can't be normal now. We can't go back to normal, I mean, after what has happened. And we're supposed to be talking about what's going on in the other states. Let's talk about what's going on here. Let's talk to each other, and that's what's happening in the streets. The confrontations are, you know, sensational, and people are filming that, but what is being, what's happening is people coming together. The protesters are unified. Thank you.
Thank you. Ciara Wofford. Chiquin Fox. Matthew Lamar.
Matthew Lamar, 4827 Pierce Street. I am opposed to this resolution to extend the emergency order and curfew because I think it is counterproductive to the goal of de-escalation, which is what everyone wants in these situations with these protests. And I think it lends itself to the creation of an us-versus-them mentality instead of an us-with-them mentality. Chief Schmader and the Omaha Police say they are with the peaceful protesters, they want the peaceful protesters. But when you have these emergency declarations and these curfews, to a protester, it feels like the city's against you. It feels like they don't want you out there spreading your voice. I'll share a couple of my personal experiences over the weekend to sort of demonstrate this. I was at 72nd and Dodge on Saturday night. When I got there, there were a few hundred people there, all peacefully protesting along the sidewalk. Everything went fine. Then, at least from my vantage point out of nowhere, approximately 75 police in riot gear showed up, blocked off the streets in every direction, and stood facing us with their batons and with their mace, and with very clearly an us-versus-them mentality. We were still peacefully on the sidewalk, not in the streets, just trying to express our concern over these issues, and the police militarized. They took the streets, and they faced us, against us. And then, we all know what happened after that. The police dispersed us. Again, I was on the front line of the protest. I was tear-gassed for no reason seemingly, other than they wanted us out of the area. There was no provocation that I witnessed, but they dispensed these chemicals at us standing on the sidewalk around 9:00 o'clock, and then after which time, the protests moved downtown. I did not go downtown, but we know that the violence then ensued after this militarized police force had escalated the situation. Take that in contrast, I went down to Lincoln, to the state Capitol on Sunday, where another Black Lives Matter protest. At that protest, there were a couple thousand people, I'd say. The entire area in front of the Capitol was completely filled with people. And the entire time I was there, I saw four police officers, not in riot gear, just regular police officers, you know, making sure that the street was clear, that protesters had the ability to peacefully exercise their right to freedom of speech, freedom of assembly, four police officers. And it was peaceful. There was no issues. We all, you know, had our voices heard, and it was a wonderful experience. The police were there, talking with us, and it was definitely an us-with-them mentality. The police were with us as we were lifting up our voices. And I think that's what we should strive for in these times, is to create that communicative, you know, relationship between police and protesters. And I think the extension of this curfew is detrimental to that goal and really enforces this us-versus-them mentality, which then leads to the unfortunate unrest in our streets. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lamar. Ally Pike.
Hello, Ally Pike, 5508 Corby Street. I'm going to try to keep my thoughts organized here. I am in opposition to extending the state of emergency and the curfews. First of all, I think that there is a lot of confusion about what exactly they mean and how we are supposed to go about having basic needs met, especially if you're somebody who works later and needs to go to the store, to go get gas, to pick up their children after the hour of 8:00. What if you're somebody who doesn't have a vehicle to drive in if you're walking even to public transportation to get to or from work, or to go pick up your children somewhere? Are you going to be arrested if you're walking to the bus stop, or if you're walking to the neighbor's house to pick up your kids? What if you're in a domestic violence situation and need to flee, and you're on foot? There are all sorts of situations that it could affect a person negatively, especially if they can't get to the grocery store because it's after hours, they realize they need something, or their child gets sick and they need medication. Having a curfew at 8:00 p.m. can do all sorts of damaging things to the community, and I've seen it happen when people are displaced from their homes right now and need to find another place to live and have, to be unloading things from a moving van after 8:00 p.m., just being outside even and needing to get places. It's taking away people's access to their basic needs, and if you don't have access to the internet or a television to get the updates that are confusing even for the people that are watching, then they might be ignorant of the rules and still be arrested or otherwise negatively affected because they just didn't know what they should or shouldn't be doing. And it does seem to condone that force be used against people. And it does seem to condone that force be used against people by these restrictions. It's kind of keeping people in a box, or if you step outside of it anywhere, it's easy for the police to be allowed to just come and take you or arrest you. So I feel like it's damaging. I've also been at the protests, and I think that the presence of police that, that are dressed in riot gear and things like this are threatening and at this point triggering for people who have experienced the explosions and experienced being tear-gassed and those kinds of things. It is triggering. I heard clicking today at work, and I was getting flashbacks of those things being shot into the crowd at us. And I'm somebody who was there one time. So it is extremely traumatic. It is extremely antagonistic to see somebody who is in full riot gear, completely protected while we have our soft bodies, you know, facing that and while being peaceful. You know, lots of people watched as we were shot at and the people around us are shot at, even if we're doing what's asked of us peacefully. Keeping crowds to 25 and under is basically saying we're going to not be allowed to stand up for ourselves and protect ourselves in groups when all of the force around us is in large groups. I mean, I'm sure there are more than 25 when National Guard and State Patrol and O.P.D. are all together, standing in these big lines with their guns and looking at us, and we're not allowed to have more than 25 people. I don't think that that keeps things fair, and I think it makes it so we aren't able to protect ourselves. And I feel like if we are trying to keep things, keep things peaceful and our police are kneeling to show that they are here with us, to be there to protect us, which our police department reached out for the first, for the first protest that Friday night, I think the 29th, and said that they're there to protect us. They wanted to make sure that the protesters that were there to show a peaceful demonstration were protected, then, then please don't show up looking like it's opposition and being opposing the protesters who are being peaceful. Tear gas is being deployed around people that can't escape from where they are, and there's no direction being given. If you do not do this, then this is going to happen. Those things are not happening. I, I was there, I was listening for the cues, and I was confused, and I went where I was supposed to go. And I was still tear-gassed and trapped in. And having a state of emergency seems like it's allowing that kind of force to be used against people even when they're peaceful. I've seen in Iowa City examples of community leaders asking the police not to show, just letting them know that we are here to be peaceful. Please don't be present, don't, don't provoke that traumatic response for people to get scared and start throwing things and start reacting back physically or violently. And the protest went great. They were peaceful, nothing was damaged, nothing was vandalized, and it did not turn into a riot. So if you do want to kneel, I'll wrap up, thank you. If you do want to kneel with us or stand with us, that's great, but please stand with us, dressed like we are, not with guns up against us in your riot gear on and with tanks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Clark Rutledge?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah. I am opposed to extending this, the state of emergency, this curfew. I think the state of emergency is a city government that feels $160 million budget to deploy military hardware and chemical weapons on peaceful citizens that gathered to grieve. That is the emergency. And if this city council is to extend this curfew and these ordinances and that, and that sort of stuff, the message you send today is that you have let people talk, but you did not listen. And it is disgusting to see what has happened to this city, to see that the police came out and deployed chemical weapons that took people grieving peacefully and turned it into a bedroom in which a young man was killed. And here, the, the mayor's office come up here and first reference destruction of property before referencing this hero's death is a state of emergency. Windows can be replaced, store shelves can be restocked, James Scrooge cannot be brought back to life. And if you want to show this community and show this city that you are with the citizens and that you want to end this sort of stuff, and you want to make this city better, you will not extend this state of emergency curfew. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Adam Sippel.
Members of the city council, my name is Adam Sippel. I'm appearing today on behalf of ACLU of Nebraska, 134 South 13th Street in Lincoln, to speak in opposition to extension of the state of emergency by resolution of this chamber. Thank you for the opportunity to appear. The ACLU opposes the extension in light of Mayor Stothard's expressed intent to extend by the authority sought from this council her current prohibition of any gatherings of 25 people or more on city sidewalks or other public places. This prohibition exists 24 hours a day. Proponents have focused on the curfew because it's perhaps only slightly more palatable, but we've heard virtually no justification for a 10-day, 24-hour-a-day ban on assembling for speech during this difficult time when speech is so important. Of course, the danger of broad emergency declarations is that it confers to the mayor the power to restrain the freedom of speech and other freedoms largely outside the democratic process, diminishing the necessary checks and balances between each critical branch of government. The council should also be wary as a matter of public safety, as many have indicated. The city has already responded to community concerns of those, has already responded to community concerns of those seeking justice with a militarized police force, armed tanks, flashbangs, rubber bullets, and tear gas. Now is not the time to employ this method, this method to silence their speech as well. An overly broad and overly long stay-at-home order stifles their voices and needlessly criminalizes free speech now when we need to hear each other's voices more than ever to foster accountability, reform, and healing. Nobody has said much about the law. The law says the deprivation of the freedom of speech, even for the shortest period of time, constitutes irreparable harm. Restriction of speech in traditional public forums like sidewalks is subject to a particularly high level of scrutiny under the law. The order currently in effect, in which the mayor asks for authority to remain in effect for as long as seven more days, 10 days total, explicitly prohibits gathering and thereby prohibits demonstrations involving free speech in traditionally public forums. Importantly, the law also protects the right of peaceful protesters against those who engage violence. The law is clear that the right of our citizens to peacefully protest is not conditioned upon or subject to what others have done in the past or may do in the future. The appropriate response is, is police presence and the ferreting out and arresting of those who engage violence in order to protect the right of the peaceful to continue the expression of their thoughts and ideas and speech. Under the law, voices may not be silenced because other demonstrations turned violent. The government cannot impose a prior restraint on speech as a safety measure. As I said, people are peacefully protesting all over the U.S. right now. You turn on the TV right now, there are people peacefully protesting during daytime hours all across the country. But under the mayor's order, in Omaha, it's illegal. It's criminalized. And closer to home in Lincoln-
Mr. Sippel, I'm going to need you to wrap up.
Yes. Closer to home in Lincoln, the curfew has been lifted. Here, the mayor asks for the authority to continue the curfew and ban protests altogether. We ask the mayor to condition her request of this council on a promise that she would not continue the, the 10-day, potential 24-hour-a-day ban on protest. She apparently refused, and for that reason, you should decline her request to extend the declaration of emergency.
Thank you. William K., are you still with us? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Melton.
Yeah, and I have a question with her law. Could the mayor issue another 72-hour order on Thursday or Friday if needed?
Paul Kratz, city attorney. Theoretically, she could, but I think that would be contrary to the process that the charter and the ordinances have set up, which is there's an emergency, the mayor has 72 hours in which she can take emergency action. Then after that, has to come to the council, to the elected officials, to continue that. I think any idea that-
Let me clarify my question.
Okay.
Because it sounds like, I mean, what if, what if we try lifting it? You know, kind of like in Lincoln. Could we try lifting it for a day or two, but come Friday, all of a sudden, we've got the same issue that we had last Friday? Since she's under that, the week-long, we've passed it for a week, could she reinstate it during that time?
Okay.
I guess I didn't clarify my question.
I misunderstood your question. You have the emergency ordinance. Were you asking for an extension of that? All that does is give her the power to impose some type of order. She's done that for the 72 hours. She can relax that tomorrow or the next day, and but if, but under this continuation, she can then reimpose that if she needs to.
Okay, that, that's-
I think that's what you're asking.
That's what my question is.
Okay.
Because what I'm, and again, it also goes to jobs. I know my son works at a gas station as well, who, they're all off at 8:00 when they're normally open later, and they're hourly employees. And everybody understands that we need to do that for the greater good of our city. But I'm thinking if it's not, if we do it and it's lifted because it may not be needed, could she reinstate it in the event that maybe a bunch of out-of-town people come? You know, the people coming down here today that were testifying, I don't think are the people creating the issues.
Was the question, could she do it, say, on Friday?
Right.
If we don't pass this? Is that what you were asking then?
My initial one was if we pass it, though, and she lifts it, could she still reinstate it?
Oh.
And my, and my answer is yes.
Okay.
Now, if you don't continue it, I think something extraordinary would have to happen for her to then ask for another emergency, want to impose another emergency ordinance, emergency declaration, excuse me.
I just wanted to, to make sure, you know, if we lifted it and gave it, and lifted it, and then it looks like, oh, that was a bad idea to lift it, could we get it back as long as it's in that time period that we passed it?
Again, that's the purpose of having this one-week time period, is to give her that flexibility to make decisions based on the situation.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Melton. Councilmember Festerson?
Thanks, Mr. President. So this is certainly an unusual time, and I understand sometimes unusual times require unusual measures. And I think that's the reason why we all supported an original emergency powers ordinance around the pandemic, which seems like a long time ago, right? And that expired over that period of time. But as I indicated at that time, and it's true with this proposal, that actually conveys very broad powers to a mayor, not just things like curfews, but things that could be much more drastic. And so I was clear at the time of the pandemic, emergency powers, and I want to be clear today that I don't view this, if it gets approved, as a blanket, blanket approval today. I think we're only as strong as our collective decision-making is on something like this. And I'd prefer it be less than a week. I understand the response that Mr. Kratz just gave in terms of the awkwardness of our, maybe our meeting schedule and how public meetings could be called if we didn't approve this because we'd either have to move, meet an emergency session to do something like that, or if we didn't, it's in question whether the mayor could institute some of these measures in a second round, but for having this flexibility. So in that respect, I understand why it's proposed as one week, even though I'm definitely not willing to go more than one week and probably would prefer less. And definitely want to see it be, get, get lifted. With that background, though, I would also say this along, similar to Mr. Palermo's comments, a lot better communication is going to be needed around this in the future than has occurred so far, in my opinion. I don't think, there, there was a communication breakdown around the first establishment on Sunday with council members and otherwise, wherever that occurred. For example, and not just council members, I had major employers calling me that afternoon saying, "What is this? What am I supposed to do with my employees tomorrow? What am I supposed to tell them? I have no idea what this is." I had a neighbor contacting me and saying, "Hey, can I, can I walk my dog tonight?" I had bar owners saying, "Hey, I'm supposed to open up for the first time tomorrow in a long time, but now I can't really, can I?" So there's a lot of questions in the community along those lines in addition to communities most impacted by this, such as the leadership in North Omaha, that I do not think was well-informed. So my plea is, and I guess Mr. Belik has already kind of explained what, what their intention is, which is to have flexibility. This does not automatically extend any, anything. There'll be a reassessment, it sounds like, after tonight and how things go. But I would encourage, in fact, I would require before I vote for this, that that be the case going forward, that we do get reports on how things go tonight before any additional measures are taken. We establish that communication that's needed for something like, like this to work well, and not just be between the mayor and the law department and the police chief, but council members in the community as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Festerson. Councilmember Harding?
Thank you, Mr. President. Marty, could you come back out? I want to first put words in your mouth, and then I'm going to take this off.
Marty Belik, Mayor's Office.
Tell me if I'm wrong, but when, when you made the comment about returning to normal, I think you just meant that having, having the freedoms and abilities to, to have, to freely move about in all parts of the day rather than only between-
That, that plus peace and public safety that we should all be accustomed to in this city.
Thank you. I just, I wanted to give you the opportunity to respond.
Let me qualify that. I realize that that doesn't always happen, but we, we strive to do that.
Yeah, thank you. So one of the questions too, and I, what was brought up maybe are about the, the size of the crowds and the flexibility of, of being able to make decisions within, within the, the next period of time that we may allow this for. So could, could you address at least maybe the size of the crowd issue?
Like I mentioned before a little bit, that the mayor is very concerned about the fact that the 25-person limit is controversial. She knows that it goes to a person's freedom to assemble. If this is extended here today, she's going to lift that requirement of 25 people to assemble.
Do we know what that number is, or is it kind of yet to be determined?
Excuse me, she said she's going to lift the 25-person rule, and I'll just leave it at that.
Okay.
She, she did not say, "I'm going to choose a different number." She just says, "I'm going to lift the 25."
Okay, all right. I think that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harding. Councilmember Palermo?
Thank you, Mr. President. So obviously, the times we're currently in are never imagined, and that's where we are. We as elected officials, at least this time, have the decision in front of us, although not easy. Maybe, maybe not the most popular decision. If you know, then you know. We have a very strong mayor form of government, and that's why you've heard only a certain amount of people at that level help to make these decisions to start this emergency order. And it's the same people that will help to stop this emergency order. But with that said, I have an incredible amount of respect for those involved, Marty. Not just because you're from South Omaha, but I respect everything you do. The police chief, obviously, his record speaks for himself. For the deputy chief to be here, Greg Gonzalez, all day long, to wait on this particular agenda item to stress how important it is for the police department to have this weighs a lot. And last but not least, Law Department, Mr. Kratz, who isn't an elected official, but he is sitting with us. I respect the decisions that are made by that group. So with that, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Palermo. No, I've got, I've got a few things, but you can make a motion if you wish. We have a motion, a second. I would just add some of my own thoughts about- I would just add some of my own thoughts about this. One is that, you know, the people who started our country listed the First Amendment, number one, for a reason. And in a democratic society, if we don't cherish that right and defend it above all others, then we risk the deterioration of other rights. And the right to peacefully assemble and seek redress from your government is so important, so integral to our society, that there's been some really egregious speech offensive to so many, but our Supreme Court has said that is the right of every citizen. But to peacefully assemble, which all have conceded was in overwhelming numbers, to have such a few people and their actions take away the right of the overwhelming numbers to redress, seek redress and peacefully assemble, to me is very concerning. More so when we don't know what the order is going to look like if this is continued beyond tomorrow at 2:00. So what if the number's 50? You know, what if it's 100? To me, that still strikes at the core of the First Amendment and what our community as people have expressed the speech in terms of grief. And how do we begin to heal as a community when we place our first responders, our, we call them the officers in blue, but they're in brown, they're in different colors, that, you know, they are members of our community, our first responders. And we place them by having orders like this in very, very uncomfortable positions. I really believe, in my heart of heart, the officers that are enforcing this curfew, who wear the gear to protect themselves, they don't want to have to have these confrontations with citizens. They don't, they don't want them. They'd want to be walking. I mean, the chief and deputy chief have, and other officers have told me personally, they'd much rather be walking along and beside. And to me, it, there definitely is a correlation between escalation of force and tone to the response that you get. We had a couple of people here that were, a professor in social work, there was a psychological researcher, and there was one other person who said, "This is established in peer-reviewed psychology. When you meet a situation, even by raising your voice, how you respond to something dictates what that person is. And oftentimes, if you use a raised voice, or you're using violence or a show of violence, it instills in the person a reaction." And so to me, I just assume, get our city into healing mode as quickly as we can and authorizing up to a whole other week without knowing what this is going to look like is just too concerning to me. Thank you. Madam Clerk, we have a motion, a second. Roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Yes. Festerson. Harding. Melton. Mr. President.
No.
Motion passes five to one.
Let's go back to item number-
Item six, an ordinance to rezone property located west of 127th Avenue and Greve East Street from AG District to DR District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item six begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Pauls. Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson. Harding. Oh, Festerson. Harding, yes. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. Item seven, an ordinance to rezone property located at 12718 Izzard Street from R2 District Low Density to R4 District High Density. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend denial of a request to rezone to R4. Planning Department recommends approval of rezoning to R3. C is communications and opposition.
The public hearing on item seven begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Melton.
So I spoke with 12 proponents and 10 opponents. Am I going to do a motion?
Roll call.
Pauls. Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson has left. Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. Item eight, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate into that district the property located at 14445 West Center Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item eight begins at this time. Becky Kane, are you ready?
Actually, during all of this time, I've had some chance to do more research, and I really have nothing to speak to the council about, so I'm good. But thank you for the opportunity.
Okay. And are there any other proponents or opponents on item eight? The public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Harding. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. Items nine and 10 can be considered together for property located at 3814 Love North Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item nine is an ordinance to repeal the existing PUR overlay district. Item 10 is an ordinance to approve a new PUR overlay district and an NBD district.
The public hearing on items nine and 10 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yeah, Michael Sands, 1700 Farnham Street, on behalf of the applicant. Happy to answer any questions.
There's also in Zoom, Mr. Akert and Mr. Hazi. Do they wish to speak?
I believe they're available to answer questions if the council wishes.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Do you want it? Saying? Harding. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. Festerson abstains. Next, can we waive City Council liquor rule on items 11 to 14?
Without objection. Roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Item 11, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Acadian Grill located at 725 North 114th Street.
The public hearing on item 11 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Danielle Dring, appearing on behalf of the applicant. I'm here to answer any questions if necessary.
Thank you.
Oh, I forgot to give my address. 10675 Bedford, thank you.
Okay. Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Item 12, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Arcade 33 located at 3301 Love North Street.
Public hearing on item number 12 begins at this time. We have the applicant, Mr. Garber, available. Mr. Garber.
Hi. Hi, Patrick Garber, 1824 North 49th Street. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. We have a communication opposition.
There was a communication opposition, correct? Sorry, I forgot to-
It's a part of the record.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Item 13, an application to consider a Class I liquor license for Ahmad's Persian Cuisine located at 4646 Dodge Street.
Public hearing on item number 13 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? You know, this is an established restaurant, just moving locations. Roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Item 14, an application to consider a Class I liquor license for Edge of the Universe located at 670 Maple Street.
The public hearing on item 14 begins at this time. Ms. Evans, thank you for sticking with us.
Happy to do so. I'm Rachel Evans, 2734 North 45th Avenue.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President, Rachel. I would just say, welcome to Benson. We look forward to having you open here, and I appreciate the uniqueness of your business plan. If you want to take just maybe 10 seconds to talk about that, since you waited all day long for us.
No, of course, thank you. And like I said, I'm happy to wait. Thank you for meeting with me. Edge of the Universe is a unique idea that we've come up with, where we do anything from coffee to cocktails, but we have a new theme every few months. So it's kind of like a themed bar, but with, we're working with artists in the local community, and then we'll also be working with nonprofits to highlight them as well. There's over 900 nonprofits, and we want to be able to give them a voice at our establishment.
That's great. It's a good time for that. And when do you hope to be open?
Well, you know, I met with my plumber today, so soon. Hopefully, July.
Hopefully, there are no surprises.
Well, yeah, COVID was a little bit of a surprise, but hopefully, no more.
Yeah. Thanks. Motion approved.
Roll call.
Pauls.
Palermo. Festerson.
Harding. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the City Council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the City Council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by the City Council Rules of Order.
The public hearings on agenda items 15 and 16 were held on May 19, 2020. Roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items 17 through 50 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent.
We need to withdraw 18.
Okay. Is there a motion to allow withdrawal of number 18? Roll call on item 18.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Is there a motion on the remainder? Second, roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Item 51, an ordinance establishing the North 24th Street Business Improvement District. A is communication and support, B is communication opposition, C is amendment of the whole requested by the law department.
Is there someone to move the amendments to? Second, roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Item 52, an ordinance to change two streets in the Coventry addition. A portion of Coventry Drive changed to R Street, and a portion of Coventry Drive changed to 205th Street.
The public hearing on item 52 begins at this time. Are there any proponents or opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 53, an ordinance approving a redevelopment and tax increment financing redevelopment agreement to implement the Ames Industrial Park Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project located at 4411 North 20th Street, an amount up to $282,676.
The public hearing on item 53 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Don Seaton, on behalf of the City Planning Department, here for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 54, an ordinance to amend Omaha Municipal Code, Section 36-2, to include definition of motorized scooter, to add 36-146 to create the offense of motorized scooter operation violation.
Thank you, City-
The public hearing on item 54 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Thank you, City of Omaha Law Department.
We, are there any other proponents in attendance before we move to the people registered online? Seeing none, we'll go to Julie Harris.
Good evening. Thank you. The scooter, I know we've been through a lot today, and I appreciate your time and patience. I'm very encouraged by the number of people who said they came forward today for the first time to engage in their city government, so that's fantastic. The scooter ordinance that you have before you, I'm with BikeWalk Nebraska, sorry, 1905 Harney Street, number 401G. We advocate for safe and accessible active transportation in Nebraska. We think that having the new scooter pilot is a great thing. We think it's reasonable to have some regulation around it. Our problem that we have with this particular ordinance is the $100 fine that comes along with riding a scooter on the sidewalk or parking it wrong or any number of things here. The reason that we have this problem, I'm looking at all of the different fines here for various things in the city, and the majority of parking issues for cars are $16, so parking a scooter wrong for $100 doesn't seem right. Also, riding a scooter on a sidewalk is a $100 fine. I know that bikes are not allowed on sidewalks in the downtown area, but I could not find anywhere in the city code, and correct me if I'm wrong, where there is a fine for that. So it's just an inequitable fine for these things. I understand we want to dissuade people from doing things, but I have a real problem with charging people riding scooters six times higher than somebody driving a car for the same direction.
Thank you. We next go to opponents. Luis Jimenez.
Luis Jimenez, 3306 Birch Street. I'm just opposed to having scooters just lying around the city. When I first heard of motorized scooter and what the city was trying to do, that was a new thing for me. So I guess it's interesting that you guys are trying something new, but at this point, it's just getting more convoluted with the regulations, and then this is more things that the police have to deal with. And on top of that, in order to use it, you got to have a credit card or account. You got to have money. So I suggest that you look into a new concept that I haven't heard City Council discuss, and that is safe spaces for youth. There's a lot of properties around Omaha that are empty that can be remodeled, and kids can make a trip over to safe spaces. Anyway, that's... What's that? Well, they're not very safe if you are on the sidewalk. Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. So I realize what we're talking about here today is just the enforcement component into our city code of what would then presumably regulate scooters a little more directly than we were able to in that first pilot project. But it is a bit hard to talk about that outside the context of what the second pilot project's going to be. So I see we have Ken Smith here, too. I know it's been a long afternoon, so I want to prolong a conversation that we can perhaps have at a different date, too. But Ken, if you want to come down just for a minute. My understanding is what this would do if approved, you know, next week would be, it puts this enforcement language into our code, but that the actual RFPs for the scooter companies comes later and still has to get approved by the council later, at a later time, right?
All right, Ken Smith, Public Works. Yes, that's correct.
And how much later would that be?
Right now, we're looking at, the agreements are in place. The scooter companies have them, and they're reviewing them. So as soon as we get that back, we can get it on the docket and get in front of you. So as soon as we get that back, we can get it on the docket and get in front of you.
And so, um, I guess, I've got a question for you. I think it's important for citizens to know when we think about this context, what is, what will be different about the next pilot project going forward? And I think that has a lot to do with rider safety and proof of age and then clutter issues and the geofencing and a lot of things I think we need to get into to tighten things up in a, in a way that was more tight than the first time. Not to mention things like sanitation, given what we're experiencing these days and helmets and that kind of conversation. In your view, is that most appropriate to have today or would you prefer to have that prior to we approve or not approve an RFP?
Yeah. Um, a lot of those, uh, safety requirements and those items that we look to, what came out of our report that we issued and, uh, we will have many of those things in our agreement that we've talked about. So the hope is that we can kind of switch things up, but I'd like to have it probably at the same time if, I think that would be useful.
Okay. That does make some sense to me to, although I, I do want to make sure you know, while you're forming those things, that those, those are the issues that I think are important to address before this comes before us for yes or no, basically at that point, right?
Correct.
Um, and I am getting questions about helmets and why, why, why have they not been required, I guess, and things like that, that we'll want to have addressed. As far as, um, when the RFPs would start, do you know what that, what your, what your goal is for that?
Um, again, it's based on the time that they review the agreements and get back to us. The RFP has been, uh, completed. We have two vendors ready to go. As, just need to get the information back or the agreements back and into our hands.
Okay. Uh, and then, Mr. Kuzi, I guess to the, to the immediate matter, um, because I, I do think we'll all have that conversation at a later date to walk through all the details. But, um, for the, for this matter, that would be presumably for a vote next week. Um, are you confident that, given what you know about the RFPs and what, um, they're forming, that we have things covered in what would be this enforcement ordinance? And that things like, um, you know, staying off the sidewalks and following the thirty-five miles per hour situation and things like where they can go and not go can be adequately, adequately enforced by what we have in this ordinance?
Mackey's, the City of Omaha Law Department. The problem that came up last year with the first, I don't want, pilot, problem's the wrong word. The issues that came up with last year's pilot program was, I had to quickly cobble together, because there's nothing in the code, there's nothing in state statutes that covered scooters and what they could do and what they couldn't do. And I cobbled together this hybrid opinion for the Omaha Police Department for Enforcement where it was part bicycle, car, low speed vehicle. And it created some issues in terms of an enforcement aspect. So one reason why after that ended and there was discussions about a second pilot, me, pilot program, I spoke with Public Works in the mayor's office in terms of, all right, what were the issues last year that came up? And many of them were sidewalks and many of the other issues that you mentioned. And to standardize it into something to say, okay, this is what you can do, this is what it's gonna be under. Because as a side note, and I don't take credit for this, I give credit to Jennifer Taylor from the law department, um, coming up with this and the police department. One of the issues that was happening was if you're running your scooter and you make a wrong turn, you got a ticket that said, "Wrong turn." You got dinged a point for the points on your license and then you got dinged on your insurance. Well, that's not really fair because you're not in your car, but I don't, I didn't have anything that said, "Making a wrong turn dash scooter." So to avoid that problem as well, that collateral consequence that I didn't want people to get, because it's not fair. They shouldn't have a point taken off their license and insurance consequences. We put everything in the one so that if the police cite anybody for that, it's gonna be violation of whatever I end up calling it, violation of scooter rules, whatever, to make it more clear. In terms of what's in the RFP, Ms. Taylor from the law department's indicated to me that the two, right, two companies that bid and that we're working on agreements on right now are aware of what is in the ordinance. And quite frankly, I think a majority of what's in this ordinance already is included in the user agreement that people agree to when they rent these scooters from the two bidders.
Okay. And I, I don't doubt that. A, as I'm thinking through this though, and just talking aloud and I'll be interested in what other council members think, it, it does seem a bit out of context to move forward with this without having the actual RFPs together. Would there be any harm in delaying this until the RFPs come and doing them at the same time?
Mackey's, again, Law Department. If I remember correctly, at the time, and this was either pre-COVID or early on in COVID, when the discussion took place, was, there was a concern that, for some reason, my head, the date of June sixteenth pops into my head in terms of a timeline, that that could have been a potential date out there that they were starting. And what my concern was is I didn't want to have the pilot program out there and not the ordinance. Because the ordinance, if it were passed, won't take effect until, I believe, fifteen days until after it's passed. So I didn't want to have this weird time period where scooters were here, but we didn't have the enforcement mechanism. So I understand your position that perhaps I put in the cart before the horse, but I was also basing that based on the current timetable of time. And I didn't want to have that gap in enforcement.
Yeah, I understand that and that's, I think that's a good answer. Okay, all you on the floor for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Festerson. Councilmember Melton?
Uh, yes. Mr. Kuzi, I know we talked about this, but this was also kind of pre-last week too. So I know we've both been busy and I know you know what I'm gonna ask you, but I was hoping that we could come up with an exclusion in the definition for the little kids' razor scooter. Remember when your kids were younger, did they ever get the razor for Christmas? I, I was guessing. And I, currently, this actually applies to those. Now, the last things, the last thing we wanted our kids to be doing when they got the little razor, in fact, the number one rule was, "Don't go in the street."
Correct.
Only ride it on the sidewalk, because I didn't want, I didn't want Jimmy getting hit by a car in the street. So now, what, now, what do we do to separate kids' little razor scooters with these scooters?
Mackey's, City of Omaha Law Department. I knew full well that I was gonna get asked that question, Councilmember Melton. And you're not alone. I don't see him on the screen. I'm not outing anybody, but the Public Works Director had the exact same question for me. Councilmember Melton, I had every intention of working on this. From when we talked on either Thursday or Friday, I promised that I was gonna work on it. However, other events took place and that has monopolized the majority of my responsibilities. So I have not sat down and thought about it or looked at. I'll, I'll be honest, I, I have not thought of it. I have not had a chance, um, to look at it. Obviously, certain other events going on right now is what's been dominating my time. Should things abate, um, I can give it more attention and be happy to float some ideas or if anybody else in the council obviously has ideas, um, on what you just have.
I will volunteer to assist in that too. Maybe if we could just find maybe somebody from council. When, there's gotta be, there's gotta be other scooter ordinances in other cities that I would assume that have carved out some exception. I just don't know where to begin or where to start.
And I did mention this with Councilmember Festerson's question, you know, these ideas, it was twofold. It was the issues that were from last year, things that the mayor said that she wanted. And then I looked at jurisdictions that also have scooters and I would not ride a scooter in Miami, Florida, because their ordinance on the scooter is approximately seven pages long. That there's other jurisdictions, I think I primarily was looking at, if I remember correctly, Salt Lake City, Arlington, Virginia, and a location in Houston, maybe, or Texas, um, that did them. And I still have those ordinances in my office and perhaps I could look at, it won't be on the one from Miami, but I could look at the ones, um, from one of those more, I guess you can call them scooter-friendly jurisdictions, that maybe they have something like that carved in there. And maybe that will do the work for me.
I would just, I would hate for some parent whose kid gets hurt on a scooter riding on a sidewalk, because then you'd get somebody like DHHS that says, "Oh, you were letting your kid break the law too." In addition, I mean, you, you know some of those stories that we hear. And I, so I just wanted to try and carve out an exception. We should be able to do it. I, I'm just not sure what language to use.
And it's, it's a legitimate and fair point to be made.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Melton. Councilmember Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. So, uh, two things. One, uh, to address what Mr. Festerson brought up and, and Mr. Kuzi's response. So the, this is just a public hearing today. The, the vote would be as early as next week and then it's fifteen days after it's, I think it's signed. But essentially, we're looking at, you know, probably more like June twenty-fourth at the earliest. And I, and so my other question would be, as it relates to the timing of the, um, the agreement with the, the two companies, I'm assuming then that that's done by resolution rather than an ordinance?
Mackey's, City of Omaha Law, Law Department, I'll defer to my superior, but I believe that's correct. And he's nodding his head telling me, he's nodding his head, affirming that I'm right for once.
Okay. All right. I, for, just wanted to make sure people's expectations, they know what the expectation might be. So this, this, at the earliest is probably gonna be near the end of June.
That's correct.
Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Harding, Ms. Kuzi. By the way, Marty Tomboy never had to have a day like today, so.
Truer words have never been spoken.
One of the things that came to my mind was motorized scooters versus non-motorized scooters. And I just urge you to kind of consider that as you move forward. The real problematic, uh, issue in terms of complaints that I received from constituents and people who were visiting my district, which is where the vast majority of these scooters, uh, were operating, is that, uh, by way of example, people would come out of a restaurant in Blackstone and some two or three young guys would come flying by on the sidewalk and, you know, hit them as they came out. And then pick themselves up and keep on tearing down the sidewalk and, you know, kind of laughing about it. So there's a real safety issue there. There are real safety issues like Mr. Festerson arrived at and, and, you know, not only rider safety, but public safety. So I appreciate the efforts that you're doing to work on that and to make sure little kids, like my daughters used to ride the razors and my current neighbor's kids ride their razors. Don't have to worry about these things. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item.
Item fifty-six, Protech appeals the rejection of their bid from April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty for the concrete flatbed truck body and ten-foot snowplow projects.
We have the appellant, Protech, represented by Brent Glenn. Uh, Mr. Glenn, we'll pull you up here and let you know when. Here you go. So please tell us, Mr. Glenn, your name, your address, and the basis for your appeal, and then we'll hear from the city.
This is Brent Glenn, uh, representing Protech. And our address is forty-three forty-three South Nineteenth Street in Council House. And I just first want to start by, um, giving all the city workers there tonight, big shout out for what you've, guys have done for the city recently. There's no, no question that that's why you guys are sitting in those chairs. You're, you're up for the task. And I feel like I could probably, at this time of night, probably should have sent you guys some pizzas or something. I'm sure you're probably all getting pretty hungry, but we'll try and keep this brief. So we were, had a, um, rejection come back to us for, um, that bid. And I was the one that made the mistake. And is what happened was I had, um, my specs out for, or I printed off the spec for eighteen and, which was the last time that we built that truck. And then I had this current spec out. And I grabbed the wrong spec off of my desk and filled it out and put it in the envelope. So I guess kind of our feeling on that is, is we'd definitely like to visit with you guys about that. The, I, I, I totally understand that we've made a mistake and that we've turned in the wrong piece of paper. But it doesn't change that we would have met exceptions. It doesn't change our price. Our bid security was the same and we've actually got at least two, if not three bids already this, that have the same, uh, bylaws, um, that are on public record already. And I guess we're, we're humans. We're gonna make, we're gonna make a mistake here and there. And especially with the time that we're in right now with the economic situation that we're facing. I guess that's why I'm asking you guys to, to really take a consideration on it. We are in the metro. The next person in line, um, is out of South Dakota. And we do also represent the brand of product that they're bringing to the table as well. And I didn't bid that particular brand because it has a major piece where it doesn't meet exception, on the flooring, on the product is the big difference. So I guess I, um, you guys can ask me any questions you want. It's, um, I understand it's, I completely messed up, but I'm just asking for a second chance.
Thank you. Did you wish to be heard?
Mark McCoy, Equipment Service Manager, City of Omaha, Public Works. So I'll, I'll just kind of explain the process. We put this bid out back in April. It's for a concrete form truck for street maintenance, uh, on a chassis that we're gonna, uh, provide. And when we put the bid out, we got the bids back. I started reviewing them and, and I noticed that the date on the bid that Protech submitted on the cover sheet was from the, uh, August two thousand eighteen bid. So, um, so I started reviewing it. There actually is also a, a, there's some differences in the, uh, in the language that are on the cover pages. And then there's actually a difference in the, in the bid too. It's not an identical bid that was put out. There is, there is one small difference in the, the terms of the bid. So, um, I immediately called Eric Carlson, purchasing agent of Douglas County, and, and he reject, he, he recommended that, uh, they reject this bid. And I also, he also recommended that I talk to Ryan. So I called Ryan from Law Department and, uh, Ryan made the same recommendation that this bid gets rejected based on the errors that they made.
Thank you. Mr. Weeson, did you have anything to add about the technical requirements of the bidding law in terms of our options here today?
Ryan Weeson, Assistant City Attorney. I'll only add just a, a brief, um, a, a brief bit of information is generally with contracts of this time, of this kind, there's not a separate contract. So the bid documents and specifications get bundled into an ordinance resolution, which is then approved by the council, signed by the mayor, then a purchase order is issued. So in essence, with the prior bid documents, we'd have a, a contract for something that would have had to have occurred in twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen. And so these may be, seem like minor technical errors, but they do have legal implications. And because the proper materials and the proper bid wasn't submitted at the time of bid opening, there's no opportunity for the, the bidder to go back and cure that after bids have been opened.
Thank you. And, and, uh, Mr. Glenn, just so you know, that in terms of the bidding processes and procedures, if we were to grant your appeal, then we set a precedent for others who fail to comply with the bidding requirements and procedures. So traditionally, it's been the position of the council, because of a strong recommendations of advice of our legal counsel, that we, um, deny these appeals because we would open the door for others to claim, "Well, you waived it for Mr. Glenn and Protech, so you have to waive it for us." And, and it may not be one that's this kind of dollars, but it could be a hundred million dollar sewer plant or something like that. And it could get really dicey for the situ, uh, for the city and the taxpayers of the city. So while we appreciate, um, your comments today and, and have nothing but, um, good wishes for you and wish you will hopefully continue to submit bids to the city, I, I just, not speaking for anyone else, but I, as I see it, our options are limited.
No, that's fair enough. And that's the first time that I've, that I've ever done, had anything where I've goofed up. And it's, oh, hearing you guys go over that, open, it's opened my eyes a little bit more. It's, I can see where on my end, it looks like a clerical mistake, but you guys have a heck of a lot more stuff that you have to deal with on yours. And that is the, I do want one hundred percent to get across to you guys that we're very, very thankful for the work that you guys have awarded us. And this is in no way gonna deter us from, uh, for the work that you guys have awarded us, and this is in no way going to deter us from still offering to provide you guys services. We're, we're very happy to be working with you guys, and Mark's been a tremendous guy to work with on any projects that we've had going.
Thank you.
So, no, I thank you very much, I totally understand, I appreciate the time, and sorry to keep you guys hanging out even longer.
They can hang out all day.
Second, roll call.
Pause. Palermo. Festerson.
I'll say yes, and it's the first time you've treated better than us, so.
Harding. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item 80, a resolution to approve the professional services agreement between the City of Omaha and Q-Toc Rock, effective upon its execution and expiring December 31st, 2020, with professional fees not to exceed $100,000.
The public hearing on item number 80 begins at this time, are there any proponents?
Marty Belik, Mayor's Office, 1819 Farnham Street. About a year and a half ago, we in the mayor's office were contemplating some funding that was available through the federal highway department, and we decided that we really don't have a voice in Washington like most cities our size would. So we started looking for the services of a lobbyist that could do that for us. It wasn't long before we learned about Dave Carnes, and of course, we all know that he's a former United States Senator, he has ties in Washington, a lot of folks work with him already here in Omaha, and he seemed to be a good choice, so we've hired him to lobby for us. He's been on for about a year and a half now, his contract has come up for renewal. And I think maybe now, maybe some would ask the question, well, what, what has he dabbled in since he's been on, on the books with us, since we've been, since he's been lobbying for us? What are some of the issues that he's involved himself with? I'm going to name a few of them. Early on, there was the issue of 5G. 5G obviously is the small cell telephone technology that's, that's starting to, it's the latest generation, it's about 100 times faster than 4G, but like everything else, it's controversial, and it's controversial in several ways. But one of the ways is how phone companies would gain access to the city's infrastructure around the world and across the country. So there was legislation in Lincoln, there was legislation by the FCC in Washington to make sure that this all rolls out in orderly fashion. So all of a sudden, it became very convenient to have Dave Carnes there, using his ties with the FCC to advise us on what the federal guidelines would be, and then we could decide whether or not those guidelines were something that we could live with here in Omaha. There's also parallel legislation going on in Lincoln as well. I think we got through that just fine. Other topics that he's helped us with, aside from the highway funds that were available, that have always been available to us, but it never hurts to have a voice in Washington, so that we can come out as well as possible with regard to funding, but such things as drone technology. Some are arguing that, well, for example, for public safety purposes, whether it be Public Works, or law enforcement, or even a fire and rescue, maybe drone technology is something that we should use here. We all know how expensive the helicopters are, I don't know if the drones are an alternative yet, but nonetheless, people talk about it, but again, they are regulated by the Federal Aviation Administration, the FAA, so therefore, there's a federal, a branch of federal government that Dave was able to help us with. Aside from that, something a little bit more domestic and a little more local is the workforce development money that we get from WEOA, that's a federal program as well, that's funding that goes to Heartland Workforce Solutions, in addition to money that we give them to provide workforce development. And of course, lately, and most obviously of all, is the CARES money. I mean, that's all we've been talking about lately. It's controversial, to say the least, people are trying to interpret federal guidelines, they're trying to interpret the CARES Act itself, then there's questions and answers that, that go with the guidelines, that go with the Act itself. In our particular case, the city has an interpretation, our finance director does, our law department does, the county board does, the state does, and, and I know you all know that, but he's helping us with that a great deal. He has ties to Washington, he can call the Treasury Department and maybe provide us with a definition or some guidance that we wouldn't have otherwise gotten, in addition to the CARES Act. We've, there's the FLEX Act, that's the Don Bacon Act, that will act, I mean, you all know that the controversy, the real problem we're having is with revenue replacement. We're not there yet, the CARES Act doesn't provide that, but there's other legislation that would if it passes. Don Bacon's FLEX Act is one such piece of legislation, would it help us tremendously? There is the HEROES Act that would help us as well, but most recently, they've come up with the SMART Act, it seems to be a hybrid of all of them, and if that were to pass, then again, there would have be language in there that would talk about revenue replacement, and all of a sudden, now we have something that would really benefit the financial problems that the City of Omaha is faced with, with regard to the COVID pandemic. So that's just kind of a brief overview of what Dave Carnes has been doing for us. It seems like the longer he's on board, the more valuable he becomes, and then I'm also coming to find out that other cities and government entities in the area have been using him. I don't know if they've hired him, but they certainly consult with him, because they know that he's consulting with us, they value his advice, and to be quite honest, some of the other government entities, the cities for certain, are cities that we would like to partner with, because with regard to COVID, all the cities in the state of Nebraska are kind of in the same boat. We have sales tax, we have occupation tax, we have gasoline tax, and we have all those lost revenues that we have to somehow compensate for. But anyway, I'll stop right there. I will also tell you that Dave Carnes, like all law firms, are able to provide us with the detailed invoice that tells, tells us just exactly what services, on which topics they provided for us in that given month. So, and that's available to you if you'd like to review that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Belik. Are there any other proponents or opponents? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Festerson.
I think a city should have the ability to have representation in Washington when there's literally billions of dollars at stake like there are now, but I just don't think this isn't a, this is an item that it belongs on a supplemental agenda. The other two items were clearly time-sensitive, this one's not. And I think it does require some more information. I appreciate the verbal overview there, but I've had literally no information on this over the last year, in terms of what we're engaged in, what we're working on, what those metrics are, and when the stakes are so high, when we talk about the CARES Act and transportation funding and other issues, I'd really like to know more about what we're really doing, and how effective we've been, and what we hope those results can be. So my suggestion would be to lay this over for a week, or maybe two if needed, to take it then information. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Festerson. Councilmember Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too, because Marty, would you come back? You said that the Senator has been working for us for over a year and a half.
That's true.
So, so there should be a trail of what he has done and what he has caused us, is what I'm assuming.
Yes.
Okay, on this one, it says that it's up to $100,000. When does that start? Because it says it ends at the end of this year, and it could go into the next year if both parties agree. I'm, to me, there's a lot of unknowns here, because I'd like to know what he's done, because I worked with him when I was down in Lincoln, and he's like you and I, he's human, he's no, you know, unbelievable person. I mean, he gets, I read where the $410 an hour, which I know is not the greatest, but other attorneys on this, on the same document get $425 an hour. I would just like to know what has been done. But you, you say right now that you can provide us with past documentation. I value a lobbyist, it's not a question, would I, just.
Commissioner, or Councilmember Pauls, these are four invoices for the first part of this year from lobbyist Dave Carnes. And as you can see here, everything is very itemized on these lists here. I know you don't have them, but I do, and I read every one of them before we pay the bill to make sure that, that I understand what we're paying for. So, so that information, yes, it does exist.
I would like to see that before I vote on it. I, I'd like the idea of laying this over, because he's still working for us right now, I'm assuming.
He is. And there's an Evergreen clause attached to his original contract, which means that, you know, it, it's, it's being extended automatically, but it needs to be renewed officially and approved by this council.
Right, because this is another example of professional services that we vote on on a regular basis, and I'm still, I've talked to Mr. Dowding, I need to have a better understanding of these professional service contracts that we do. Because we do a bid like on a road, we know who makes the highest bid and all that, these professional services, which we, okay, on a regular basis, I just think we need more information.
What, Council, Councilman Pauls, what I'm going to do is regardless whether this passes today, next week, in two weeks, or whether it passes at all, I have this information, there's no reason I can't share it with the council. As a matter of fact, I'd kind of like to share it with the council, because it'd be good for everyone to know what we're doing at the federal level, in detail, and this does have detail.
And we may say we need to do more. I mean, if there, if there are dollars out there at the federal level, and it's just because we don't have somebody else there promoting us, you know, the cost-benefit analysis could be quite great, but I did hear about extending this.
Yeah, I do, deliver one week.
I second that.
Hold on. Were you finished, Mr. Pauls?
Yes, I am.
All right. Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. I intend to vote for this. Whenever I have asked for an extension or a layover in order to get more information, I've always appreciated the support I've gotten from my peers. So I'm going to vote for the layover, but I just wanted to let you know, Mr. Belik, as you sat down here, I plan to vote yes, when it comes back next week.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Melton.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
How long's the layover?
Yes, one week.
Non-action items, items 57 through 76 do not require a public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration.
Second, roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Mel, Melton. Mr. President. Motion passes six to zero, meaning it has turned at 7:41.